The Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board 13 Board Meeting. My name is Ernest Carvalho. I am the Chair tonight and we'll go ahead and we'll start with Board Member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone, for coming to join us tonight. I'm Kevin Lai.
Good evening, I'm Bob Armstrong.
Hi there, Lori McCarny.
Hi, Ross Isokane.
Aloha, Chulunshu Quak.
And also, you want to introduce yourself online, Sean?
Hi, Sean Fitzsimmons. Nice to meet you guys. Nice, thanks for coming.
Sean Fitzsimmons, Vice Chair. And then we have Camilla over here and she's our Neighborhood Assistant. All right, so we'll go ahead and we'll get started. Call this meeting towards 6 o'clock when we start it. So we're going to start with the filling of board vacancies. So residents interested in filling a vacant, board seat must bring current proof of residency to the board meeting or to Neighborhood Board Assistant Camilla Eppa to verify residence in advance. So, yes, Mr. Lai?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to take this moment to nominate Ms. Jocelyn McMahon for the position. And I believe that she's online.
Yeah, so they're gonna, we know who's online. They're gonna, we don't need no nominations for that. They're gonna go step up right now, introduce themselves that they're running. Then we can go from there, yeah? They're not-
Although they do need to be nominated by a Board Member Chair.
Yes, but they're gonna let us know that who they're running, that they want to run, then we can nominate. That's what I'm saying. Right, is Jocelyn online?
Yes, I'm online. Hello.
Hello, Jocelyn. All right. Any other board, anyone else out there, whether they're online or here in the lobby that wants to run? All right. And we have Ms. Laura Sturgis. And you've been verified, have you been verified?
Yes, yes, Camilla verified me.
We need a nomination, yeah? Somebody needs a nomination.
Chair, I'd like to nominate Laura Sturgis.
Okay, and then Kevin, we got you as nominating. I'm Jocelyn. Okay. Jocelyn, is there anything you would like to say to us?
Well, yes. I'm actually the pastor of New Life Church Honolulu. We occupied the building on the corner of Nuanua and Beritania for about 20 years. And then we just purchased a building on Smith Street. I'm a resident, I live in the area. I live in the Honolulu Towers. And I'd like to serve on the board because I'd like to be able to be a problem solver or offer my service to. I'm very familiar with everything that we go through in Chinatown and the area. And so I'd like to serve here.
All right, thank you. That's the church right there on the corner?
Yes, we moved to Smith Street. So we bought the television station. It was a Trinity Broadcast Network station. So it's right on Smith Street.
All right, thank you. Anything else you want to say before I move on?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, Ms. Laura Sturgis?
Hello, my name is Laura Sturgis. I've lived on and off here downtown since 1976 when my mom bought it a condominium down here. I've been born and raised here in Hawaii. I raised my child here downtown Chinatown. I work here in town, I live in town. I've been working at First Hawaiian Bank for over 21 years. My mom actually was with the board many, many years and with First Hawaiian Bank for 38 years. She was a wonderful woman, Dolores Malbring. But the reason I'm here is this is my community. This is where I live. This is where my husband and my son live. And I've always tried to put a good foot forward on what's happening around town. When I see things, I report it. And when I see things that need to be improved, I also reported it. I want to continue in that vein of support through being part of the board. And I hope that you will also think of me in that capacity as well. Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you. We appreciate that. All right, so we'll go ahead and we will do vote. There'll be no questions asked to those that are stepping up. Yeah, no questions. Yeah. Go ahead.
Chair, I'd like to move that we do allocate 5 minutes for a Q and A session for the nominees.
And so the reason I'm doing no questions is the only reason to be qualified, to be on the board, is that you live here in downtown Chinatown and not outside of the area. It's not what you know of the Neighborhood Board rules because those are things you can learn as you go. So if there's somebody who wants to volunteer that's never been on the board, then they should have the chance to do that. There'll be no questions asked. You did this with Sean before and that went out of control. You ended up spending over an hour when you're a chair trying to do that. That's not going to happen. This is my agenda. It stands as the ladies were able to tell us something about them and that's what I asked. I gave them a chance to do that.
Chair, we're gonna move to voting now?
Yes, call the question. Let's vote.
All right. Okay, you could just call the name Mick Mahon or Sturgis when I call your name. Armstrong?
I think it's McMahon, but I just want to say it's wonderful. We have two wonderful candidates. I vote for McCann. McMahon.
Fitzsimmons?
Sturgis.
Isokane?
Sturgis.
Lai?
McMahon.
McCarny?
Sturgis.
McDonald? Not here. Chubert Quak?
Laura Sturgis.
Carvalho?
Sturgis.
Okay, so we have three votes for McMahon and five votes for Sturgis. So. One, two, oh, sorry, two votes for McMahon and five votes for Sturgis. Sturgis is the new member.
All right, so we'll go ahead and take a two-minute brief, the time, two-minute recess while you go ahead and get her sworn in. Yeah, thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and I'll go ahead and call us back to order now. All right, so next up, we're gonna go to Public Safety, item number three, a Honolulu Fire Department, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Arakaki, Captain at Central Fire Station. And I'm here reporting the incident statistics for August of 2020. We had three nuisance fires. Nuisance fires include rubbish fires and auto fires. 21 activated alarms. 101 medical incidents, one motor vehicle collision involving a pedestrian, seven motor vehicle crashes, one hazmat incident. Onto the fire safety tip for the month is move over for emergency vehicles. Drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law, to help protect our first responders while performing their duties near or on a roadway. This is more than a public courtesy, it's the law. It's Hawaii Revised Statutes 291 Charlie-27. Sorry about the radio. It requires the driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer or other official duties as indicated by the flashing emergency lights of the stopped emergency vehicle shall, one, slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of an emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to a complete stop before making a lane change under paragraph two. Two, make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary and if it is safe to do so, or if possible, to two lanes over, which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. Note, emergency vehicle means police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, freeway service patrol, county vehicles, while personnel are working. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you very much. So is there anyone in house who has any questions? For Sergeant Arakaki?
Yes, sir.
Not seeing not anyone online with any questions? Not seen one? Any Board Member? Go ahead, Board Member Armstrong.
Hi, Sergeant, thank you for coming. The hazmat incident that you explained is that worth talking about? Is that something the public needs to know about?
No, sir. Actually, I don't know, I don't have the details for each incident. It's just a summary. And I don't know all the details about that one. But as far as my platoon, I didn't respond to any.
All right, any other Board Member? Here, any? Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you, bye-bye. All right, next up, we have item 3B, Honolulu Police Department. Lieutenant Segusio, please.
Good evening, Chair Carvalho, Board Members and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Arnold Segusio representing the District 1 Community Area Responsibility of the Honolulu Police Department. I'm gonna get right into the stats for this month of August. So motor vehicle thefts were four in the previous month, six. Burglaries were five, the previous month was also five. Thefts were 24, the previous month was also 24. UNVs or car breakings were down, it's three from the previous month, it was six. Assaults were 18, it's up from eight from the previous month. Six assaults were two, the previous month was one. No graffiti cases for both months. 22 drug offense arrests or related type cases this month of August, and then 10 from the previous. So total calls for service for your particular area was 2,487 compared to the previous month was 2,288. There were no criminal breaches to report at this time. However, there was a rise in assault cases for your area. I looked into these cases and there were the results from late night bar scenes. We continue to patrol Hawaiian North, sorry, Hotel Street areas during the weekend, bar closures. This will not result in a criminal breach in the assaults because the suspects are all different. I also looked into the robbery reports for the area. There were three. I looked into those cases. One was closed due to prosecutor's declination. One case was withdrawn by a complainant and the other is still in progress, but there is a lack of participation by that complainant. Upcoming events in your area are the 911 Memorial Walk happening on September 8th. It's gonna be from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Then on actual day of September 11th, there's gonna be a remembrance ceremony at Tamarind Park from 11:45 to 12:30 p.m. The public is welcome to come and participate to remember the people and the first responders that were lost that day. I'll end this, I'll end with the safety tip of the month for September regarding securing loads. We at HPD have been responding to a lot of calls for debris on the roadway and freeways. It's due to not securing our belongings effectively. We found all kinds of things on the freeway, like coolers, cooler lids, plastic chairs, playpens, surfboards, and even Christmas trees. These items become an extreme hazard to motorists, especially motorcyclists. We're asking our community members to take more time and to be patient to secure loose items in the bed of your truck or even when securing it to your roof racks. Motor vehicle fatalities counts are at 20 this year compared to 38 last year about the same time. At this time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the Board Members and public attendees.
Thank you, Lieutenant Segusio. Is anyone in our house right now this time who'd like to address Lieutenant Segusio? Seeing none here or not? Anyone online beside Board Members? Robert Quater, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Lieutenant Segusio. So I live at Halei Olu Senior Residence, 1331 River Street. We have some problems once in a while with homeless people coming around. And sometimes they come in through our gate when the gate is open. Unfortunately, on one occasion, we had someone who came in and he came upstairs and they started dismantling one of the resident's bikes here. So the resident had called HPD and apparently was told that the resident manager needs to be the one that calls HPD. And so until the resident manager contacts the police department, they won't be able to do anything. Is there someone I can talk to or that we can work out so that we don't have to go through the resident manager? Because she's not always available. And that puts us at a risk if we're not able to call 911 and have a responding officer because they're requiring the resident manager to make the call? Is that a policy set in stone? Is that something we can work around? That we can actually call 911 as a resident?
There might be misconstrued. So in regards to the bicycle, if it's there, if they're stealing parts of the bicycle or trying to steal the bike itself, anyone can call. We can run the VIN on the bike or the bicycle emblem and try and make contact with the owner to generate the case to make the report. I think it's more in regards to the trespass in regards to the person being on property. Because obviously, it's a communal area. There's a lot of residents. It would be better if we get the assistance from the resident manager who can speak for the building itself.
I see. So it was more in effect of a trespassing charge? But as far as theft, we can call anytime and report it?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, sir. So if anybody's trying to steal anything or looking suspicious, like they're trying to take items out of the building, go ahead and give us a call. And just like I always tell all their Neighborhood Boards, if you're not satisfied with the service of the officer, please request for a field supervisor and have a sergeant or even the field lieutenant to come out and then explain the situation to you better.
Thank you, Sergeant Segusio. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lieutenant Segusio. Anyone else that's not a Board Member on there? What's his name? Lost? That's all I can see. Lost? Unreached. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move on at this time. So next, I see Board Members. We had Board Member Sean, Vice Chair Sean Fitzsimmons, please.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Segusio. Much appreciated as always. Thanks for your reports. The one thing I did notice is that, a couple of things, right? You noticed a rise in assaults. You referenced the bars and clubs being the area in which those occurred. Earlier this month, you know, I was walking on Fort Street at lunch and I saw a fight. You know, I videotaped it, I posted it on the Board's page. And it occurred right in front of the ML Security Guards golf cart that they have there. And my question was, like, you know, they're supposed to be helping you guys provide security for the Fort Street area. And, you know, given what I saw at lunchtime when no one was there and the increase that you reported earlier tonight, could you speak on any types of, how HPD is coordinating with ML Security at all to ensure that that area of Fort Street is safer? Thanks.
In regards to ML Security or the security team that's working for Street Mall, they're just our eyes and ears for the location. They're supposed to give us a call. They don't have a use of force policy. So I don't think they can engage with the combatants in that sense or use any type of force. I think there's some sort of legality, liability, sorry, not legality.
I guess, no, I know that part. But I was wondering whether or not they've been contacting you guys just regularly?
Yes, absolutely. So some of those people that work for ML Security are retired officers. So they do call us. Sometimes they don't call 911, they just contact us straight at the Chinatown Substation if it's a non-emergency. But something like that, they should have just directly called 911. So we could have got, did officers respond, counselor?
No one responded. Yeah, no one was there. There's a fight in the middle of lunch. Like people are walking past these people, like, you know, throwing cones and, you know, going crazy on each other. And unfortunately, no one's-
Yeah, like I said again, if you see something like that that could get out of hand, because obviously, there's a lot of violent crime. Things escalate. We don't want it to be that way. Please contact police and then we'll come and service that call. That call would actually have come in as a priority one. So that would have superseded all type of other calls, yeah, a fight call.
All right, okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Thank you, Lieutenant Segusio.
Other question? A question for the Lieutenant. Half of the Chinatown cameras are up and running. Are they being functional and being recorded now? And who's monitoring them anyway?
All right, so Lieutenant Segusio, before you answer that question, person that's on yourself lost, can we please have your first name and last name, please, for the record?
Henry Pang.
Enrique, and your last name?
Pang.
Henry Pang? Thank you, appreciate it. Go ahead, Lieutenant Segusio.
Yeah, so we did get notifications that half of the cameras are already up and the city is trying to finish up the rest. The monitoring station area in the Chinatown Substation is operational at this point in time. In regards to if it's recording or if we can review the camera, that would be a question for the City ITD to answer, yeah? So at this point in time, we're watching it. However, we're being told not to operate it at this point in time because until they get it all up and functioning with that whole system there, it's pretty comprehensive. So we have a table set on the side with monitors. And then we're also watching it on overhead monitors so we can see what's being seen on the cameras. But at this point in time, we personally are not reviewing it. We're not in control of it at this point in time. And any other questions in regards to that would be for City ITD to answer.
All right, thank you, Lieutenant Segusio. We really do appreciate it.
In the future, once it's implemented, are they being watched? Or is it just simply recording only? You know what I mean? Until an incident occurs, then you guys go and do the research on it?
I think they're still working that portion out because the person that's gonna have to be monitoring has to be kind of sort of a subject matter expert in regards to the cameras because of its operation and recording of it. And so, and that person would have to be vetted because the Chinatown Substation is a secured facility, yeah? So it's gonna take some time. But that would be a question again for City ITD to answer.
All right, thank you, Rita. Appreciate that. Moving on, we're gonna go to Board Member Kevin Lai, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. Lieutenant, a couple of questions had arisen about an event that happened. I believe this was Wednesday morning along or near Fort Street Mall at Beritania with the collection of a pickaxe from a gentleman who had come out from one of the condominium building areas there. Did you have any ideas or recollection of this? If it happened on your shift or your team reported? I think one of my constituents had looked up the police blotter and saw that the gentleman that had done this had a long history. And again, we're just looking at the issues of folks who are out on the streets and wreaking havoc. And this comes after, of course, the smashing of the string of car windows around the Zippies area in the downtown area. So it's certainly of concern and people are literally afraid to go out at night and now sometimes at day as well. Related to this would be the attack that was reported on some elderly folks at Keiko Leiki Mall area by a dog. Don't know if you have any recollection of this. This was probably two to three weeks ago or so. And then again, just the follow-up of the palace pallets, pallet palaces rather, in our adjacent areas that are, you know, completely blocking the roads and the bikeways even. But this story, that a twist is this, we know that people were delivering- And so having found someone literally delivering these pallets on a probably cart from Home Depot, what can the public do when we see this happening? Thank you.
All right, Lieutenant Segusio, please keep it within two minutes. Yes, thank you.
Okay, in regards to the pickaxe incident, if I'm not mistaken, there was an arrest made with that incident. I'm not too well versed in regards to that incident, but I can bring back that information to you if you want to. In regards to the dog bite incident, that's why we're always recommending that owners keep their dogs on a leash. I think in this incident, it was loose dogs in regards to that particular incident. So leash dogs. And then another thing too for our community members, dogs are animals, so it's not your dog. I wouldn't go ahead and try to pet these dogs. We do often get sent to a lot of dog bite cases where they happen, instinct that it's the friendly dog and then they approach it and the dog bites them. So in that instance, you know, check with the owner. Verify that, you know, this dog is pretty calm and you can pet it and stuff before doing so. And then in regards to the evil situation, I'm working with my command in regards to these pallets because obviously, these pallets are building material for the RCP, the Residential Challenge people that reside in our area. So we're trying to hold these companies accountable in regards to these pallets, right? I mean, like, if I'm not mistaken, the city is charging for pickup of shopping carts. So we should also do that for pallets. So I was thinking that these pallets, when they're brought in, it should have a serial number or some sort of business name on it. And then we should hold those companies responsible for the collection of them because we do find these pallets all over the place. So we're constantly working on it, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to Board Member Bob Armstrong, please.
Thank you, Chair. Point of order, I noticed that when Mr. Quatero spoke, he was on my phone camera. I mean, his camera was on my phone, but not on our screen there. And I just wonder if we have the latest software operating? Because he was always in the black or in the dark when he was speaking to the lieutenant. Just wanted to bring that up to whoever needed to know. Lieutenant Segusio, thank you so much. I just want sure, the Memorial Walk is Monday at 5:30 next to the park that's next to the police station? Is that correct?
Uh, let me just, if I'm not mistaken. So it should be the 8th. I think it's a Sunday.
Sunday.
Oh, Sunday, Sunday, okay. Okay, I'm glad I clarified that, thank you. And the reason for my taking the microphone, first of all, a compliment, the mini park behind the police fire station is much improved. And I have seen HPD clearing the area and it's well-needed and appreciated. On the other hand, it does appear that there has been no improvement in the intersections on Poly Highway or Vineyard, particularly that intersection. I know those are state highways and that might be a different jurisdiction, but there doesn't seem to be any-
10 seconds.
Any trolling there or stopping of those individuals. Can anything be done?
Thank you.
And they're mentally ill for the most part, those folks.
Yeah, so first part, in regards to Kamali Mini Park in the rear of the HFD Central Station. I take no credit for that. I'm gonna give all my credit to the officers that patrol that location, especially Officer Sean Borges. He has taken it upon himself because it's his beat to check it periodically every night. What really helped was the signs that were put in indicating that you can walk through, but you cannot remain during- What really helped was the signs that were put in, uh, indicating that you can walk through, but you cannot remain during closure hours. Uh, so yeah, I, I leave that up to.
Much appreciate.
Yeah, to the officers. So in regards to the Poly Highway and Vineyard, are you talking about the people that are panhandling?
Yes, but there's one individual, he was there right before this meeting, who is mentally ill. He's often in the streets, walking around half, half dressed. Called core on several occasions, but he always comes back. So, you know, what do we say to constituents?
Uh, you know what? Uh, let me, let me go and take a look at that. Uh, I'll go in forward at information to my patrol officers for that particular. In fact, that is the same officer that, um, conducted, um, his issue, uh, his thing at Kamali Park. So I'm gonna, um, see if Sean Borges can, um, take a look at that person and maybe make contact with him.
Alright, thank you very much, Lieutenant Segusia. I'm gonna cut this down right now. Yeah. Um, this is, this will be, I, I, this is run, you've got five minutes for this. This is gone twenty minutes. So we're gonna cut this down, except for one last word, um, Lieutenant Segusio. So, um, we have a concern and I've got less than a minute to tell you about this concern. The concern is that the, um, there's a lot of problems going on at the Kamaka Ha Theater. We would like you to take a look at it. And the other concern is Allah Park. You've got, you gotta The park and you guys are just letting it go. That's it. No need to answer the question now. Just go ahead and send me an email. Alright? Okay, I wanna thank you, Lieutenant Segusia, for your time. Appreciate it. You have an awesome day.
Absolutely. I'll respond back to you. Bye bye.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next up on my agenda, so what we had is coming up was a presentation of a certificate of recognition. Unfortunately, the person that's getting the certificate of recognition had a more important event to go to. Orders baseball game. So we're gonna go ahead and redo this for next month to give this certificate. Yes, go ahead.
Chair, is it a surprise?
Huh?
Is it a surprise?
Yes, I'm not saying the name.
Copy.
Okay, alright, alright. Thank you. Appreciate that. So next, we're gonna go ahead and we're moving on to item B five presentations. You have ten minutes to ask your questions. And to, um, do your presentation and to get your questions in. We may run a little bit longer depending how hot the subject is. And we respect both the public and the board on certain issues. Okay? So first up, um, it's supposed to be for one electric with Brendan. Brendan and I had a call, um, together on Tuesday. And the questions that need to be answered on the filings and the claims and all that, especially I know Vice Chair, Sean is very interested. They're not done with it. They're gonna have everything done before the end of the month. And they will come on in October to go ahead and answer all your questions. Because there's a lot of questions on the claims and everything else. So they're gonna do this in October because they were not ready and prepared To finalize everything yet because they're still finalizing everything. Alright? Alright, so they will be back here in October. So we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna move on. The request for temporary road closure for children and youth day on Sunday, October sixth, twenty 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 four. Everyone, Alan, Alan Silva will be presenting for CYD Planning Committee. Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Hello, Alan Silver here, representing children and youth day. And before I start, just wanna thank the board for your service and congratulations to our new board member. And I'm here because we're celebrating Children's Youth Day, the thirty first anniversary of the Children's Youth Day. I started volunteering about almost thirty years ago with Senator Chun, Senator Chun and Dennis Arakaki. They put this incredible program together and it's still going. Every first Sunday in October, we celebrate Children's Youth Day. And the reason why I'm here, like, um, Mr. Kavaya mentioned, we need road closure from six AM to four PM on Punch Bowl. And the day before, we'll put out flyers to let people know that the road will be closed. So as we're here, we're celebrating Children's Youth Day again, another great celebration, great entertainment. We're also inviting the governor and the mayor to be there. Um, neither them, I'm in charge of entertainment. They will not be singing. I already have enough entertainment. Okay, so, um, Governor, Mayor, you can relax. You don't have to sing on that day.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, is there anyone in our public library who would like to ask any questions of Mr. Silva? Anyone in the community that's online who would like to ask questions of Mr. Silva? I see none here and not, um, Board Member Li. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I, I, yeah, go ahead. Okay, we'll start off with Board Member McCartney. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. That is great. Thank you for continuing this. My only question is just confirming that this is in between Between Beretania and King, or where is the road closure?
Right on Punch Bowl.
Punch Bowl from where to where?
Um, from the beginning to the end. So no, no cars.
So all the way to Alamoana from?
Yeah, just in that section there. But by four o'clock, we'll open the road up. We've done it the same way every year because we have a lot of activities on that road too with kids dancing and.
Yeah, no, that's awesome. I'm usually, I was thinking it would only be from Beretania to King Street.
Yeah, that's it.
But you're saying it's going all the way to Alamoana Boulevard?
It was just Beretania to King, excuse me.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
We can extend the program if you want to.
That helps you, that helps you connect the civic center and the state capital.
Alright, thank you. And I do apologize. I do apologize. I'm Board Member, you know, calling, yeah. Um, Board Member Li.
Uh, thank you, Chair. No, I think that the public has now been better informed about the road closure extent, so I'll defer. Thank you.
Any other board members? Alright, if you guys haven't gone to this event, it's a great event. I've been to this event before. Alright, well, thank you very much. Oh, you want approval from us, huh?
Yes, please do.
Go ahead.
To support this, very important Children's Youth Day. Thank you.
Second, Board Member Armstrong, seconds. Alright, go ahead. Is there any discussion on this? Any objections? Alright, not hearing no objections. Disapprove. Go ahead.
You're all invited to October sixth, Children's Youth Day.
Alright, thank you.
Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you very much. Alright, next up. We have dine, art, shop and love, D A S L. Honolulu first plan for Saturday, November twenty third, twenty twenty four, posted by the city's Office of Economic Revitalization. I'm going to mispronounce this. If I do, I do apologize. It's Guillaume Mammon?
Very good. Thank you. I've been here for thirty seven. I'm used to it. Thank you very much. Um, Chair, Board Member, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to talk to you about a, an event That we'd like to organize in Chinatown in order to help revitalize the area. Uh, so if I may give a very small introduction about OER, um, next slide, please. Uh, since we are the newest office, uh, at the city and county of Honolulu, we were created during COVID. And, um, our goal is to help revitalize the economy. If we have to say one sentence, actually, it would be, um, make Oahu A good place to do business. Next, uh, slide, please. Thank you very much. So the, uh, my name is Guillaume Mammon. I'm the Regenerative Tourism, um, Program Manager At the Office of Economic Revitalization. And what is regenerative tourism? As far as the city and county is concerned, we, um, want to pivot the hospitality Towards a more regenerative approach. And, uh, we do that by prioritizing, uh, the care of our people in our place. The old system was prioritizing the shareholders of the hospitality industry. Want to make sure that, uh, we talk now about the stakeholders, our community. Uh, doing this, we, in two thousand twenty two, we signed a MOU with the Hawaii Tourism Authority To implement the Oahu Destination Management Action Plan. If I talk about that is because one of the action in the action plan has to do, to deal with, has to do with buy local. That's why I'm here to talk to you about that. So we work very closely to implement the different actions, um, set in the D map. Next slide, please. So our four part city, as I mentioned, one is buy local, transportation, short term rentals And better manage popular this, popular destination, what we call hotspots. Next slide, please. So, uh, what I wanna talk to you about today is, uh, the priority that we've established with the D map, buy local. We have done several projects already to invite our hospitality industry and mostly the buyers In the, uh, the hotels and the restaurant to buy from local farmers and producers. Today I'm here to talk about a project, um, that, um, aims to revitalize, uh, Chinatown. It's called DASL, uh, stands for dine, art, shop and love Chinatown. It is scheduled three months from now on Saturday, November twenty third, two thousand twenty four. We chose that date for many reasons. It was a date where the Hawaii Theater was open for us. I'm going to talk about it in a second. And, uh, there was no football game, so hopefully we can have people coming to Chinatown. Uh, and it, it's around the area all the time where people start shopping for Christmas. The objectives are promote local arts, boost economic activity and help with community engagement. Next slide, please. So the event highlights, um, art performances. I'm gonna start with that. The idea is to center the event around the Hawaii Theater. So those, uh, the people at the Hawaii Theater are the first people we are connected with to open the theater on this Saturday. Uh, November twenty third, from, uh, two PM to nine PM and offer free, um, art performances. Uh, we'd like to offer art performances that feature native Hawaiian, uh, art and Chinese art as well. Uh, in addition to that, we are going to have next door, uh, the Sonia Sen Park, uh, street performances. And, uh, we are, uh, going to work with, uh, hopefully the Royal Hawaiian Ben, bringing the, the Hawaiian, um, Royal Hawaiian Ben there As well as other performances. The idea is to actually stagger the performances from the inside and outside. We are also organizing a fashion show that will take place at the Downtown Art Center. And the fashion show will feature, um, items, uh, collections from, uh, local designers located in Chinatown. So we've already worked with some of them and, uh, we're very happy to, um, feature that. We've also worked with the Narcissus Festival, the people from the Narcissus Festival. Uh, the model will be the participants and the former Narcissus, uh, Pageant winners. Uh, so this is, uh, to, um, Have people come to Chinatown, experience the art. It's a family type of event. We encourage, uh, uh, children to come as well with their family and encourage them to shop local, To dine in Chinatown and to really experience Chinatown. This is not just for residents, but for visitors as well. As a matter of fact, some of the partners that we have, and I will show that in a, in a, uh, a slide later on, are Hawaii Tourism Authority and HV And, yeah, and OVB, Hawaii Visitors Bureau. Next slide, please. Thank you. So yes, I was mentioning, um, our partners that have volunteered to work with us. Of course, um, our city and county departments, um, we are connecting with HPD, uh, DTS, our Department of Transportation Services, DPR, Department of Parks and Recs, uh, to, uh, close one of the street. We're, uh, in the process of working on closing Uh, offering, uh, the ability for people to move around freely. Uh, and, uh, so we're working with all our departments. Of course, the Hawaii Theater is a part of our, uh, initiative. They are very strong partners. Hawaii Tourism Authority is also a partner and we've done a financial request for sponsorship as well. They are also going to help us advertising with the visitor industry as well as the Oahu Visitors Bureau. We've been working on several projects with both HT and OVB. We're happy to have them. And the Chinese Chamber of Commerce has also been very helpful with this initiative. We've worked, we are working with them at the moment. Uh, CNHC, the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement, will be one of our partners as well. And, uh, it doesn't show here on the, um, on the slide, but, uh, DAC, the Downtown Art Center Is partnering with us as well. As a matter of fact, the fashion shows that we are going to, uh, have during that time will be at the DAC Center. So we'll, we hopefully bring people to watch the fashion show, to know about our local designers here in Chinatown. And of course, uh, look at the beautiful gallery on the second floor at DAC. Uh, next slide, please. So the, uh, DASL key takeaways is, uh, to celebrate Chinatown's rich cultural heritage, Support local artists and businesses, foster community engagement and contribute to Chinatown's ongoing revitalization. So this is a pilot project. It's important that I mention that. And ideally what we wanna do, although it's a one day event, we'd like to do that, uh, and work with a nonprofit organization To, uh, start the project, the initiative and have them do it on a regular basis. It can be yearly, semi yearly, maybe even monthly, uh, if everything works well. Our goal of the city and county is actually to use this program and do it in other districts. So, um, if it works well, we'd like to go to Haleiva, we'd like to go to Kaemuki, uh, Kailua, Kaneohe and other places. That's why we're trying to do with Oahu, helping with the revitalization. Just wanna bring one more thing also. One of the challenges that we have, uh, is to make sure that people are moving around. For example, if you have kekis, um, uh, hula, I, I, I think those are wonderful and bring a lot of people. But we wouldn't want the, the family to just come, look at the performance and then go home. So we're going to invite people to move around. We are going to give them a, a little map. I've done that with, uh, another event that I organized last year. And people will, uh, have to go to all the businesses that are open and participate in DASL and get a stamp. And if they're able to get stamps and go to all the businesses, move around. At the end of the day, we'll have a special performance at the Hawaii Theater, uh, exclusive for the people that were able to, uh, get the stamps. Will be open minded if they don't get all their stamps, but that should be an incentive for people to come. Uh, next slide, please. I'd like to thank, uh, the board for welcoming us here and, uh, would love to, uh, work with you And have your help as well if we can advertise the event on November twenty third. We are doing our part as well to advertise. And this is also the reason we, where we have our, um, Communication Manager, uh, Max Rodriguez, who's with us also today Helping with the, um, promotion of this event. I'm available for question if you have anything.
Alright, thank you. So first, we'll start off with anyone in house in our library. Do you have any questions? Not hearing any, not seeing none, anyone online? Not hearing any, not, not seeing any. We're gonna go ahead and we're gonna start off with Board Member Laurie McCartney.
Thank you very much for your presentation and very excited, you know, thank you. More acti-, uh, more activation in, um, the downtown area is what we're looking for. And, um, so I was just wondering, is that also Small Business Saturday?
No, so that's interesting. We chose it on purpose to be just before Small Business Saturday. Small Business Saturday is the day after Thanksgiving is the, it's two days after Thanksgiving. And, um, and we made sure that we didn't compete with that day.
No.
It's the Saturday before that.
Okay, no, that's great. I think, um, I think that's great. You could also leverage it because you also have people already downtown.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, talking about the vitality of it. Cause my question was as far as consumer, um, communications and promotion, what are you doing to bring on the businesses And have them put on, you know, specials and invite people in and what have you? And then last question, cause I'm running out of time. Why is it Chinatown and not downtown?
Um, we actually call it downtown Chinatown and, uh, and, um, you know, I'm happy to, to change the name. But, uh, the idea was downtown Chinatown. Actually, this is the reason why I'm here today. Uh, we can rename it if this is an issue.
Well, I was thinking you could use a better name than D A S L.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. Um, and to answer your question about the, the businesses, so yes, the idea of the map, for example, The idea of the map that we had and people collecting stamp is not, not just to go to a store and collect a stamp. Hopefully the stores that are participating, yeah, who are participating can offer something special. They can even have their, uh, in-house casual fashion show when people come, come, um, to the store. They can offer food and drinks if, if it's possible. Exactly, exactly. No, thank you. And this is definitely what, what we're trying to do. And that's why we're trying to really make people move around. The challenge that we have, as I mentioned, is that we've seen it in the past, people just come, they look at the performance, but they don't really Go around and enjoy Chinatown, enjoy, um, you know, the, the stores and, uh, and the others. And specifically for our visitors that do not know Chinatown. And I have to say that sometimes they have the impression that Chinatown might not be the place for them to visit. They've heard that it could be dangerous. So if we show them that, no, it's a great place. It's a, it's an event that is really for family. Uh, by the way, uh, this is what we're trying to do. Thank you for the question.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next question. It will be Shulon Sugarqar, please.
Thank you. Um, this is the second time OED is doing this. It was done during, um, Pan Am's time about fifteen years ago. And we were the organization that helped. And we call it the Chinatown Festival because we had it at the Smith Beretania Park. And, uh, but this is a much bigger event. So downtown Chinatown is great. And I also feel like the art center should be called downtown Chinatown. And I also feel like the art center should be called Downtown Chinatown Art Center and not Downtown Art Center. Okay? So just to square the way that, because a lot of time, a lot of the Chinatown galleries have gone, are gone. So we needed that as Downtown Chinatown. Because usually downtown is, you have the Capitol, and then you have the bar district and the art district. And then this side of Chinatown is more cultural and old, old school. So it is appropriate to be Downtown Chinatown. And I like the program, and we're gonna support you and like to promote that for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so next, we're gonna go ahead and take two more. We're gonna start with Bob Armstrong, then we're going to Ross.
Thank you, Chair.
We're gonna do three more.
And thank you for your time, Guillaume. It's a great initiative, very, very supportive of it. But the, I'm assuming, the street vendors, particularly those who sell food, with those who are permanent restaurateurs in the Chinatown downtown area.
Yeah, so at this moment, we don't have, we haven't planned to have street vendors, so people that will compete with the business. Because that was an idea that we had also. It's bringing maybe special markets or street vendors. But we thought that if we do that, they will compete with our business. So this is not part of the project that we have.
So the street is only open for pedestrian traffic?
That will be open for pedestrian, and we can have performers as well, street performers. Ideally, what we want to do is, and we are turning to D P R, is to use the Sonia Tseng Park to have people move around. But yes, we don't want to compete with Chinatown. That was an important part of it.
And one last thing, any promotion of the multiple parking lots that we have in Chinatown downtown and the bus will certainly bring more people. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your suggestion, and we thought of that as well.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead, and we're gonna move on to Ross, board member Rossi Sukani, please.
Thank you, Chair. Oh, yeah, thank you for the event. We're huge supporters of these community events. We passed a resolution unanimously urging more community events. So thank you for what you're doing. Now, for private event organizers, I don't usually ask about financials because it's none of my business how much money you make or how much money it costs. But for this one, since it's sponsored by the city, maybe I'll just ask on behalf of taxpayers, where are these funds coming from? Is this from COVID relief funds? Is this from the H T A?
I have to tell you that we haven't, we haven't got much money from the city and county. It's all going to be on volunteer basis and work that we do. So our Office of Economic Revitalization might give us some money, probably less than five thousand dollars, so not much. And we've, I asked H T A to help us with sponsorship. So this will come out of the D M A P funds. The D M A P, as we know, the Destination Management Action Plan, is from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four. So it's actually ending soon. They still have money to help. And Action H of the D M A P, you can look at it online, Oahu D M A P. Action H is buy local. So they do have money to spend on initiative that buy locals. That's the reason why my first ask was the Hawaii Tourism Authority and making sure that we can use those D M A P, this D M A P money that is being, is going to be lost if we don't use it. So this is what we have. Other than that, and that's a good question, taxpayers should know about that. Other than that, we don't have any other money coming out of the city.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we'll go ahead and move to board member McDonald.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Guillaume, for being here. My question, well, it's more of a comment. It's just, again, I want to second a lot of the comments that were made. It's so nice to see organizations coming to support our local businesses here, which have been struggling since the COVID pandemic. So I commend you for what you're doing here. If I have a question, it is just that I would like to support you and what you're doing. So is there an event that our board can vote on to support today?
So we are gonna vote on this. Yeah, once, so once the question's asked, the next question for the motion, yeah? So apparently you want to go ahead and start the motion. Okay, we'll allow you to make a motion.
Make a motion to support this event.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? We're gonna go with Laura on this one. Board member Laura. Second, okay, go ahead. Any discussions on this? Any objections? Not hearing none? Disapproved. Thank you very much. You have a good day. Thank you. Appreciate it. Sir, can I ask you a question? I hook Laurie up to my email with you? Can I hook Laurie up to my email with you?
Of course. Yes, yes, absolutely.
For the question for you.
No, I'll just, I could be a connection.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm gonna just, I'm gonna pull her into my email.
Absolutely, yes. No, I'm very happy to communicate as many as possible, as many partners we can have. Like I said, we don't have much money, but we got a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of hardworking people.
All right, okay, thank you very much. All right, appreciate that. All right. Next up is the Autumn Moon Festival on Saturday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, from ten A M. to four o'clock P M. And a quarterly report at the same time, Bailey Stack. So this Autumn Moon Festival does not need and will not be getting an approval from us because it doesn't need to do this. We just put it since it is a festival, put it in this time slot so she can at least present that part and do her quarterly report at the same time.
Yeah, it doesn't need approval because it's not closing a street. We'll be holding it in Smith Baritania Park. We've been doing this for several years now. We've done it at the Cultural Plaza. We've done it at Smith Baritania Park. We are growing it with lanterns at businesses throughout Chinatown. Last year, we hung a hundred and fifty lanterns throughout Chinatown in front of Chinatown businesses. We encourage them to decorate or embellish the lanterns to make it special so that people will come to their shop or their business to view their lantern. So it makes it different. Everybody's not having the same lantern and the same colors. In the park, we'll have entertainment, cultural entertainment, we'll have taiko drumming. We'll have line dance. We'll have a Taoist blessing and some dance, folk dance, troops and Tai Chi group. And then we'll also have lots of activities, free activities for families and children in the neighborhood, including solving lantern riddles, storytelling, face painting, balloon twisting, things like that. So it should be a really fun day for all. We hope there'll be a way to go out and explore the neighborhood, to look at the lanterns in front of the various businesses. So we're still working on that aspect of it. But it's a nice day. People get excited about it, and it brings the businesses in as well to participate in the event. So.
All right, does anyone? For Mr. Stack? Not hearing none, seeing anyone? Anyone in our audience? Not hearing none, seeing any? Any board member? Shulon, one minute, please, go ahead.
Been this for so many years. And I know in my younger days I would participate, but now I have some issues, so I'm not able to haul the stuff around to participate. So I hope you don't take it as not supporting you. But I really appreciate all that hanging of lanterns, which we did about two years ago up here.
Yeah, yeah.
And there are more lanterns in Chinatown. It's very festive, and thank you so much for designing them. And that running event in Smith Baritania is not easy. You always have to combat other elements. So, yeah, wish you all the best, and I'll stop by.
Okay, great.
Definitely support this festival.
Thanks. Oh, and I did, I did send a flyer to Eppa. Are you able to post it on the screen? I didn't have time to print out flyers for everybody, but I did send you one by email.
All right, Ross is doing that. Any other board member has any questions?
No questions?
No other questions. And there is no there is no, no need for support from this board for this. It's just a presentation of what's going on. That's it, all right? Thank you very much. Have a good day. Thank you. All right, next, we're gonna be moving on to B E. Updates and plans for Hava Blue twenty twenty-four on Saturday, twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four. We do have a provisional approval of this. Mark will be speaking to us. And before Mark speaks, I would like to say there is a bit of misconception between me and Mark, communications. But everything was taken care of. And, okay?
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the board, and thanks for the opportunity to speak and field questions. My name is Mark Tyrone. I'm the founder of Hava Blue in two thousand eight. I launched Hava Blue here in Chinatown. And this year would be, I believe, our thirteenth event, if we ever to proceed. And the last event in two thousand twenty-two was one of the larger events in Chinatown. We brought approximately ten thousand people to the neighborhood and celebrated Halloween and celebrated Chinatown with stages in multiple places. So there's, there's a lot of people, people explore the neighborhood. It's not confined to one, one small block. And it's, a lot of storefronts get visibility and a lot of businesses get foot traffic as well. And who comes to Hava Blue? It's really, our two thousand twenty-two event was a very diverse event. The main age range was actually like twenty-five years old, like seventy, seventy-five years old. Halloween is a very popular event here, the creativity. And, you know, most of the people are probably thirty-five to forty-five, but we have a lot of people who are older. And again, as I've said before, some feedback I've heard from some of the businesses, one of the older, our older bars in Chinatown, well, in this era they've ever had in the history of their business. I will say that, you know, it's, I don't think there's a perfect event in the world where every single person is gonna think it's the best thing for their business, and I recognize that, and everyone's voice is important. But the feedback I've received is that the vast majority of businesses and visitors greatly appreciate and value the event. This week, I've heard from about three different businesses asking me if the event is happening and hoping that it happens. Through the years, when I run into people that have come, not just through the years, just this year, so many people expressing how much it would mean to them for the event to happen again this year because it's a unique experience. It's Halloween aloha. It's creative, friendly, and festive, and it's a great way for people to connect with their community and feel like they're part of something special. And that's, that's the number one driver for me. We did have some issues in two thousand twenty-two, which have been discussed here with our entrances. And as I highlighted last year in our plans, we've addressed that by enhancing our training. We have two entrance points, entrance points where people can pick up a wristband and also just the sidewalks where people can enter, you know, as they would any other night. And so we have two different crews there. The sidewalks are patrolled by our private security that we hire, and then our wristband stations are controlled by people who we hire to handle the wristbands. And so with that wristband group, we're doing a Zoom call and requiring them to take a test afterwards to make sure they know the key, the key rules of neighborhood. And then with the private security, we, we learned from, from the issue that we had in two thousand twenty-two. And a big part of that issue was the company we hired was, was spread thin, and they actually subcontracted out to handle those sidewalks. And so every security company, they rate all their internal security people, right? They literally know who their best people are and who the people are not quite as good. And going into that year, our head of security felt that patrolling the interior grounds was the most important thing. And he put his best people on the interior. And he also had multiple events going on around the island, and so he couldn't staff it with all of his own people. So he subcontracted out. All the sidewalks were assigned to a subcontractor, and that proved to be a problem. And so this year, we are using two different security companies. And we're having Rain Security Company, that works with one of the Hava Blue partners closely on many, many events, handle all those sidewalks. And so we can bring some of their top people down to do that. And then interior will still be managed by the same company that we've been working with for years because they work at many of the bars every single, every single week they're there. So they know, they know the owners, they know a lot of the patrons. They know, you know, they honestly, they know some of the troublemakers that you want to keep your eyes on a little more, and they know some people are sensitive that you want to be particularly sensitive to. So we've addressed the plan in that, in that manner. And then the last thing I want to share before I open it up is, is, I stressed this last year, is that the city made very clear that they will enforce a rule that they have in place, and that is if there's a violation in any of those entrances, they have the right to shut the event down on the spot. All the entertainment stopped, all beverage services stopped, and we still have to foot up bill and pay for everything, and we have no revenue. So that's, that's a major, major stick hangover ahead. And obviously, we paid the ultimate price last year, weren't able to do our event. So with those two things, there's a great deal of motivation, and I feel very good about the plan that we put forward.
All right, thank you, Mark. I really appreciate that. Okay, we'll start off in the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time? Please come up.
Yes, I believe last year, the city asked that there be beer gardens at the event and that it be set up with beer gardens to ensure public access. This was also a recommendation of the Joint Fact Finding Committee from two thousand fourteen. It was published where alcohol shouldn't be served in public right-of-ways or in beer gardens. So I was wondering if that is still on the table. You said it was a mistake. Obviously, people disagree because it was brought to your attention before the event, how it was laid out at the entrances and the sidewalk. So anyway, but that's my question about the beer gardens.
Regarding that question, we have not settled that point yet. We are still in communications with the city about how that will be handled. I do want to point out that that's, the document from two thousand fourteen that was referenced does not a binding document and doesn't have authority over, over the neighborhood board or any, any city administration. But, but I will say, while that's, we haven't had the city's ruling on that yet. Partnerships position myself and my partners that the beer gardens are not feasible. So if that were to be a requirement, that the event would not take place.
Anyone else in the audience? Sir? Nope, then we go to audience online. Anyone online have any questions for Mr. Tyrone? Go ahead, Robert Quatera, please. Robert, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, board. Yeah, I just moved to downtown. I've never been to the event before, but I'd just like to inquire, is this a family-friendly event? And what type of entertainment would be on the stages?
Sure, it's a great question. Many people do bring family, especially early on in the night. We, we open up at five o'clock and up until about eight o'clock. A lot of people have brought children, and we see a lot of great photos of those kids having a great time in the past, and it's absolutely encouraged. After eight o'clock, eight-thirty, it tends to get quite crowded. And so then it's, it's not as family-friendly just because it can have a good number of people and a lot of the families would prefer not to be in such a space. But everyone is absolutely welcome through the whole night. And then the types of entertainments is we have local artists performing on a stage next to the Arts of Mark's Garage. Those are mostly band performances. We have a dance stage near the corner, at the intersection of Hotel and Smith Street. And then we have a, an interactive kind of arts display. Last, in two thousand twenty-two, we did a faux Chinese herb shop where it's interactive, more like a theatrical exchange with, you know, that's, it's not a stage. It's actually where people can interact with, with our actors.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else from the public? Not seeing any? We'll go ahead and move to board. All right, we'll start off with Bob Armstrong first, and we'll move to Rossi Sukani. Board member Sukani, then board member Quoc.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, I noted Mr. Quatero did appear on my screen, but not up there.
I noticed that.
And then I also wanted to mention, as a point of order, that Sean is remotely on our board, and his screen is absolutely black, which is kind of odd since, I know the camp hall, since there is a requirement that you have to keep your camera on if you're a board member.
Yeah, for voting purposes, yeah.
Okay.
For voting purposes, yeah.
Good luck with, with the event and very supportive of it. We missed it last year, and the businesses need it this year. May I suggest, well, I have a question and a suggestion. The suggestion, suggestion is for children, early on, it would be wonderful if we could get back to the idea of trick-or-treating in the in the booths or whatever, if that could be incorporated in some way, shape or form. I think that would be a very positive thing to bring families to the event. And then the question is, I haven't heard you say, when is the dismissal time for events? I hope it's reasonable, so.
Yes, sorry. So all the entertainment and the beverage service stops at 10:00 P.M.
All right, next, we'll go ahead to Board Member Sukani.
Yeah, thanks for being here. I just want to say that after COVID 2022, I think, was my favorite event, or what you put on. It was my favorite event in Hawaii. So that's just a comment. I mean, there's not really a question here other than to say, I wish the best of luck to you and your partners. I hope you make a ton of money. And so that way, that incentivizes you to keep going. But I know margins are very thin for what you do. And I hope you're getting all the support you need from our city and state leaders and the administration because, well, and hopefully the neighborhood board as well. But, you know, I would love to hear from the city, actually, because, you know, we're big supporters of this event.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, we'll go ahead to Board Member Shulon Shuber Kwak. You have a minute, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I just have several questions. One is, are you charging people for wristband this year?
Yes, there is a charge for the wristband, but the wristbands are only needed if you wish to purchase alcohol in the street or if you wish to attend some clubs, some of the private establishments after 9:00 P.M. we partner with. And so for the participating clubs that say, we want to partner with you and support the event, it's required for that as well. But there's no fee, there's no wristband required to enter the event.
Yeah, but it's a public road, public space, and it should be a free event for people to go. Because you mentioned last year that was a miscommunication with your people, charging people wristband, $15 to $100 for them to buy liquor. So then you told us that it was a big mistake and that you're not going to do it this year. So that's one question. Number two question.
Okay, so Shulon, Shulon, hold on. No, 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 you haven't finished, and I'm going to give you a time to finish. I'm going to, I'm asking you, you have one minute to ask your questions. You can ask all three questions at one time. Instead of asking a question, stopping, then asking a question. I want you to ask all three questions at one time, please. That's all.
You stop by one minute.
No, no, I'm giving you the time right now. I said you have the time right now. I'm giving you the time. Go ahead. That's what I'm saying.
Second question is, the board in the past have asked you, and I think the city also asked you, to get a beer garden. I just heard you said you can't do a beer garden. There's a big fucking lot, but you can do the beer garden and we feel a lot safer. Just like the Korean festival, we had the beer garden, right? And so those are important things that we have noticed over the years that can control the liquor better if you have a beer garden. And I don't understand why you can't have a beer garden.
Yes. So I want to point, I would like to start off by pointing out that in 2022, the Liquor Commission was on site with multiple inspectors and we had no violations or citations. So we didn't have problems with alcohol. And regarding why not, is it's a very popular event and safety is the utmost importance. So we have, and it makes it an expensive event in many ways. We have 57 private security personnel that we're paying for, and we also pay for approximately 29 HBDo special duty officers. The event in 2022 cost approximately $250,000, a quarter million dollars. And there's no guarantees that that money comes back. It's not, we receive no sponsorship from the city or any other government institutions. And there's two things. There is a revenue change there. Actually, three things. It has an impact on revenue, has an impact on the experience. People want to come to this event and they love the fact that they can roam the streets of Chinatown. The event, the service stops by 10 o'clock and we haven't had an issue with security or disorderly conduct. And the last part is, is security inside the beer gardens is a concern. And that putting people, you know, in crowd control barriers that are locked together. We had a tsunami evacuation one year, and one of my partners feels strongly, he feels that he doesn't want to put his name or take the liability of having people penned inside areas like that. The last thing, sorry, there's a few tithes to this is, we looked at maybe doing large, really large zones to try to accommodate things. There's safety concerns with that, but it also, it limits the amount of access to the businesses. You know, it's hard to get in and out of those types of zones and it'll be a lot less foot traffic to the businesses.
Thank you very much. Board Member McDonald, then we'll finish up with Laurie and then myself.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Tyrone, for being here. It's no secret that I'm a big supporter of this event and events like this. So we're very happy to see you back and trying to put your event together for this coming year. And I think we're all, or most of us, are very excited for it. It's a fun little fact, I saw on my Facebook little memories page that I actually bartended one of the little bartending huts about maybe 10 or 12 years ago. And that was a fun event and gave me a little extra money for my pocket. And then about six years later, I was the owner of the bar that was in front of where I once bartended and a little hut. So it's beneficial, these events are hugely beneficial. For I benefited as just a citizen at one point and then as a business owner. And I cannot begin to say how much our businesses appreciate these types of events. I do have a question, I actually have two questions. The first question would be, because I'm such a big supporter of this event and we did not have our St. Patrick's Day event or some of the other Cinco de Mayo and other events, are you interested, is there anything we can do to encourage you to maybe take on some of these other events, like the St. Patrick's Day event? That was very largely.
10 seconds more.
And then finally, if the police or some of the other authorities are putting pressure on you for some things, maybe for the next meeting, you can come to us with a proposal of how we can vote to ask them to ease up or ease on the restrictions that they're putting upon you for these events.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. Go ahead.
Thank you. I am happy to provide that feedback in the future if we've run into an area where we're having a tough time reaching agreement. Regarding St. Patrick's Day, you know, I heard a lot of great experiences from Hubble Blue 2022 and that's appreciated, so I appreciate that suggestion. But right now, I'm going to make sure that, you know, work with the city and make Hubble Blue happen and go from there.
Thank you very much. Next up, we had Board Member Laurie McCartney, please.
Well, let me just say thank you for your investment in our community and helping to get more people downtown. And it's very exciting. I've been going for years. And I'm on the older age group thing. And I think what works out is that you go earlier and you leave when you want to. And I think that's what's really great, everybody can have fun. We do know that some of the city departments have heard from us in the past, in the distant past, that we were not encouraging local events. And we want to make sure that you, as a messenger, as you're talking to them, if they feel that there's a question about our support for events such as yours, that that statement that was way years ago is ancient history and that they should refer to what we've sent them recently.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is Board Member Kevin Lai, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mark. Can you kind of recap for us, for those who might not be able to or want to participate, some of the sound controls that you'll have in place? And then lastly, could you commit, although you're not required to prepare and present a report to us at the December meeting or the next potentially available time?
Yeah, so the first one is, I will, if we're able to get our permit approved, I will come before the board, not in November, but in December, and share a summary report. And then regarding, I'm sorry, can you repeat the other question?
Some of the sound controls.
Sound controls, yes. So we're employing the same sound control plan, monitoring and safety plan that we did in 2022. And that is, we have someone dedicated to each stage with a sound monitoring device and then also a manager checking in with them as well. So we have that monitored throughout the event. And we had a lot of success with that in 2022.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and finish this up. So I just want to clarify. You stated that if the city says you have to have a beer garden, then Hubble Blue will not happen. Second, you did clarify, and just clarify this for me, you did state that you're going to have two securities. So anyone that wants to come in, because they're not going to, they just want to go to the local places and all that can come in, no one's going to get harassed. The second one is for those that are just buying tickets to go to the special events and buying beer on the streets, correct?
A clarification, we have our private security, a new team dedicated to all the sidewalks. So all the sidewalks are open, but we need to make sure no one carries alcohol in. So we have a security post there. And then the wristband stations are not security personnel. They're not trained to enforce, you know, or monitor security. They're dedicated to the wristbands. But within our private security team desk, there are two, there will be two teams. One company that is doing just the sidewalks and entrances and exits, and the other company that is patrolling interior grounds.
All right, so you clarified that no one has to buy tickets if they're not drinking on the streets. Go ahead, Shulon. Thank you. All right, so that, and this is questions, this question and answer. So now we'll go move to the next part of this. Any discussions? Go ahead, Board Member Armstrong.
I would like to make a motion to support Hubble Blue.
You're making a motion? A second. Sorry, McCartney. All right, any discussions on this? All right, not hearing, not. Any objections to this? Go ahead, Shulon, Shulon Kwak.
Chair, that people should be charged for wristband when it's public street. That's one that was promised and broken. Secondly, I don't believe that Mark made promises about beer garden and didn't want to follow through and gave me lame excuses. To me, if the Korean festival that's bigger can do that and you don't want to do that to safeguard our streets, I don't support you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I just want to make a clarification because what he's saying is, you don't have to pay for wristbands if you're going in to sit down at your regular pub or if you're going in to sit down at your regular restaurant. The wristbands are only going to those that are buying special tickets to get into special pub events and those that are going to be drinking on the streets. That is what he said all night long. So wristband, so if you're just walking in, you, if I'm just walking in, because I'm not drinking this, if I'm just walking in, I'm not getting a wristband. I don't have to pay for that, neither do you. That's what he said. So I just want to clarify that. That's exactly what he said. You can say something.
Call for the question.
Because I was not understanding. The only charge was for wristband to go into special event. When you're 21, that's the law. So you tag people who are 21 in order that they can buy beer or have a mixed drink. You can't charge them a wristband for wanting to buy a drink, which is illegal age to do so.
Just buying a drink and on the streets, not in bars, that's what he's saying. Okay, all right, so we're going to go ahead and, is there any more discussions? Nope. All right, we're going to go ahead and do a vote, roll call vote, please.
Okay, the motion is to support the Hubble Blue event on Saturday, October 26, 2024. Armstrong.
Aye.
Pitt Simmons.
Aye.
Issa Kanne.
Aye.
Lai.
Aye.
McCartney.
Aye.
McDonald.
Aye.
Shuber Kwak. Sturgis. Carvalho.
Aye.
Eight votes for aye, one vote for no. No abstentions. Motion is adopted.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Next, we're going to go to item V16, Public Concerns. This is only for the public. All right, all right, please come up. You got two minutes. It's St. Jude and First, please. Thank you.
Aloha, I'm Karen Owana, and I'm the Director for Advancement for Kulia Academy. It's a brand new charter school that opened our doors last month. Good evening, Chair, Board Members and Community. Let's see, in part, the reason I'm here tonight is because we have students who reside in your Neighborhood Board region. And as you may know, charter schools are not bound by geographic areas. Kulia Academy is unique in that we are preparing students for higher education as well as top-paying STEM jobs. We have a comprehensive artificial intelligence and data science curriculum. Our sixth graders are coding programs, flying drones, building self-driving cars and mastering augmented reality and connecting with their community through e-cyber mission. This year, we are at capacity. However, we are accepting applications for students entering the sixth and seventh grade next year. If you are interested in learning more or if you'd like to enroll your child or a Nova family that may benefit from having their child attend our school, you can easily log on to info@kuliahacademy.org. We also have a YouTube page and we're also on social media. Thank you for your time, Chair and Board Members, and I appreciate your service to the Chinatown Downtown community. Mahalo.
All right, thank you very much. Now, okay, so Board Member Lai, remember the courses must be brief, yeah?
Thank you, Chair. If I could just ask the speaker to let us know the physical plant location of the facility.
Yes, we are located at 2340 O'Meeloe Lane. And that is the St. John the Baptist School site. It closed in 2020. But with, through negotiations, we're able to secure that site for, we're looking at holding it for our middle school, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And then we're constantly on the hunt to look for, as we go up. Every year, we'll include another 100 students. So we're looking for a high school site. Once we meet our 12th grade, we'll go back down, fifth, fourth, third and on.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Thank you. And actually, I'm going to put this in my building and take pictures and spread it out, okay? Thank you very much and good luck. I wish you guys the best, huh? First now, any other ones in the community who would like to speak that's in this room, in this library? All right, here and now, seen on, anyone online? Robert Quatero.
I'd like to ask that last, I'd like to ask the last speaker. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. I'd like to ask the last speaker, what is, what is the opportunity to be enrolled there? Is there a lot of positions? I have a grandson who I think would be interested. What is the chances of being enrolled there?
Interestingly enough, there is a high request. We had 200 applicants for 100 seats. But I would not, I would encourage you to please apply if they're entering the sixth or seventh grade next year. Because what happens is through attrition, people move, people decide to attend a different school or for whatever reason or another, we were able to assist having the entire, those who are interested at the end attending. I hope that answers your.
Would there be a preference?
Mr. Quatero, just so you know, and I'm going to let you finish this question up, okay? Public Concerns is not a question and answer period. It's where the public comes in and they give the concerns about what's going on in the community. And that's it. We can ask a question, like he asked, where's the public place is going to be? Where is this school going to be? You can ask times and all that. But to gather any information, we can always gather information and send it to you. Public Concerns is just that, just your concerns, okay?
Okay, thank you, Chair.
You can go ahead and finish your question, as I said. Go ahead.
I was just wondering if there's any preferences, like a minority group or Native Hawaiian? Is there any preferences?
We did do a lot of searching within the Kalahui community. However, our student body is extremely, extremely diverse from, throughout the island, from all the way from Yani to Kahala to Kaileua, Kaneohe, Chinatown Downtown, Kalahui and other areas throughout the island.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board.
All right, no problem. All right, so everyone going for, anyone that wants to speak on public concerns, you may. As far as audience and wars, remember, the questions should be brief. It's basically to ask a question, yes, or like Board Member Lai, ask where the place was going to be. Those is acceptable, but no questions for going back and forth. Thank you, non-public concern. Is there anyone else online who would like to ask a question? For public, who has a public concern? Do you have a public concern, Mr. Quatero? Do you have a public concern, Mr. Quater? Mr. Quater?
Uh, yes.
Okay, you got two minutes.
Uh, well, actually. So I think I, I can just wait for the mayor's representative. My hand was just left up.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Quater. Thank you, appreciate that. So seeing no one else, we're going to go ahead and move on. Next, um, we're going to go to item seven, new business. Five minutes on each of this. A resolution 2024, all four supporting bill 46, 2024, to establish an empty home tax in Honolulu. I don't know if they addressed it today like I thought they were going to because I wasn't able to watch. But anyway, we posted this up and I know that, um, everyone was asked to look at it so that we don't miss time on this and we can go through this. Go ahead, um, Mr. Isakane.
Well, yeah. Used in August by Council Chair Tommy Waters, Floor Leader Radiant Cordero. It's meant to, uh, just address our affordable housing crisis, just another way to do so. Now, it did pass first reading in August. It is currently stalled in the HSH Committee. I believe Matt Wire is the chair for that, but he has indicated he will bring it up, um, later this month, or he intends to. But, so we'll see. Um, if we choose to adopt this resolution, it would just be showing our board's support for this idea. And, uh, I, I would just encourage anyone who's passionate about affordable housing, you know, if there's a future reading, go ahead and submit testimony because it's, it's a really important one and there's a lot of testimony for and against, uh, on this one.
All right, do we have any discussions on this part? Board member McDonald, and then we'll go to board member Li.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm just curious here, uh, I mentioned it when it came up. I believe it was at last month's meeting, but I would like to, I'm not sure if it's possible to amend this, but I would also like there to be some provisions for empty storefronts and commercial properties that also sit, uh, unrented and unleased and, um, and the landlords just sit on them and don't seem to have any concern that, uh, that those spaces, uh, businesses also need places to rent and lease and do their business. And it's very counterproductive for landlords to just allow them to sit unused. And so I'd like there to be something that we can do to expand this to, uh, commercial space as well.
Uh, so that probably is a possibility. But, um, I know the city council, um, Richmond should be on, and I think that they should bring this up also. But I'll let, um, Russ answer that question.
Yeah, if I may, thank you, Chair. No, I, I totally agree with your concept. Um, I, I would just say in this instance, getting the residential empty homes tax is going to be a battle enough. So if we might want to, I would support doing a separate resolution for that, actually, because I totally agree with you, but this might be a case where let's just, uh, push this.
Okay, all right, um, board member Li, please.
Thank you, Chair. Fellow board members, if you've not read bill 46 yourself, I think it would be difficult to make a movement to indicate support for the resolution. Not that there was not a lot of effort taken to create the resolution by Mr. Isakane, and that's to be appreciated. However, if you don't know the recommended by the current draft 46 or any of the 14 exemptions that would disqualify or change the status of a home or know how often you would need to submit information to the government about activities that happen in your homes, that is if you're receiving medical care that might prevent you from being able to rent out your house for a certain period of, of each year. Just be very wary of the slippery slope that this represents. And again, its concept might be good, but to issue blanket support now, I think is very premature. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Any other board member, Boardman Armstrong?
I do have a question, and that is, is this resolution also being visited at other neighborhood boards?
Go ahead, yes.
Uh, I, I would love it to be, I mean, assuming the pass is here. Uh, we, Chair and I talked, we could disseminate it.
Any other questions from any other board members here? All right, so next I would like to go to, um, Representative Ela Kim Coco. I believe she has something to say on this topic, please.
Yes, thank you so much. I applaud your introducing this bill. Um, but, um, as I'm not sure you're aware, the state legislature at one point did consider in an empty home surcharge. Um, as many of you know, the, the state cannot tax private, um, cannot tax real property, but it can, um, try to collect a surcharge based on revenue, on, on tax revenue that was not able to be collected because the private, um, real estate investor would not rent out the dwelling. Because when you and I live in our dwellings, we go out into the street and we buy things. We contribute, uh, G E T to the state revenue. We also create jobs in restaurants, um, and then they pay income tax. So our spending, because we're living in the community, actually generates state revenue, um, that your, that, um, anyway, so please, I, if it's, uh, if it's possible, and I don't know if it is, but if you would consider, um, expanding this bill to support empty homes tax and possibly an empty home surcharge, um, for the state. Because it is a bill that I'm going to introduce.
All right, um, thank you, um, Russ, did you hear that? Go ahead, yes.
Thank you, Representative Elect. Instead, my, my recommendation is, uh, we could do a separate resolution. Um, if, if, if you can get some legislation out there, because we'd love to see it.
Okay, so what we're saying is we're going to take a discussion right now, uh, again, um, anyone? Do we have, is there anyone that would like to make a motion to support this bill at this time? But, because I'll make a motion to support this bill. A second? You're going to second? Okay. Any discussions? Go ahead, Mr. McCarty.
Thank you, Chair. I just think it's premature right now for us to support it. It's not formed, it's only been through first reading. Now we're talking about state, you know, fee, you know, a surcharge and all of that. It just feels too early to support. It's, it's a, it's a concept at this point, so it's hard to support when you don't know where it's going to end up.
Okay, um, Bob Armstrong. Oh, you know, because, Mr.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'll echo Member McCarty's comments and those of my own from earlier. I think that, again, the board should read the, the bill. Perhaps most of us have, but again, some of the stipulations are quite onerous. Uh, again, some of the paperwork that need to be filed every year if you are a homeowner. Questions of how much revenue this would actually raise versus other means of raising, uh, such revenues. And, um, maybe there are other ways, but I think at this point, uh, let's see how it falls out by the city council. Thank you.
Board member McDonald? No, uh, go ahead, board member Isakane.
Yeah, thank you, board members, for your concerns. I'll, I'll just point out that this bill has been put up three different times already. So it's been discussed a lot. I think it first came up during the Caldwell administration and just hasn't quite gone to a vote yet. Um, it's modeled actually after Vancouver's bill. And Vancouver's done very well. There's been a lot of studies. So it has been, you know, a lot more thought has been put into this bill, I think, than, uh, than we might be seeing or just, just in our board. I just want to voice that, that, uh, it's, it's been many, many years of effort. Uh, and I think, I think this one might have legs at the council.
All right, so, um, before we move on, because we just, um, discussed this and take a vote. Would anyone want to amend this to state that we postpone this for a month or, or two? See where they're going instead of saying no? If not, then we'll go ahead and take a vote on the bill as is. Go ahead.
Um, I would ask for a postponement amendment only because I'm not on this. Otherwise, I would have to decline on the vote altogether if I can't get it postponed.
Anyone else have thoughts on this? Russ, your thoughts?
If this doesn't pass, can we just reintroduce it later?
No, no, yeah, so we, go ahead. Uh, he was going to, yeah, no, do you go ahead? Yeah, so if it doesn't pass now, you will not be able to reintroduce it in a framework, yeah?
Yes, can't we just, I mean, we can supportive or at that time. You know, I think that there may be certain aspects of it that we want to have a comment on. And that's where my hesitation is, just to give a blanket, yes, we support it, when there's parts of it that I think may be something that we'll want to know more about, how it's going to go, if it's onerous requirements on people for reporting. I think the city council and those guys, you know, they have a lot of work to do or else it would have gone sailing through. So my opinion is that we're sort of early to do something. And I would say at a certain point, we can be ready, um, to support it or not support it based on what its form it takes.
All right, board member Li.
I have no comment, Chair.
All right, so shall we go ahead and vote on the original, right? All right, the vote is whether we're in support of this as it is written now or not, right?
I'm still not clear, is, can we reintroduce it later if it doesn't pass now? I mean, we'll have more information based off of hopefully the HSH Committee.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, you'll be able to reintroduce, okay, go ahead.
The motion is to support the resolution supporting bill 46, 2024, to establish an empty homes tax in Honolulu. Correct? Okay. Armstrong.
Aye.
Pitt Simmons.
Aye.
Isokane.
Aye.
Li.
Nay.
McCarty.
Nay.
McDonald.
Aye.
Shuber Kwak, not here. Sturgis. Carvalho.
Aye.
Okay, five votes for aye, two votes for no, one abstention. The motion is adopted.
All right, so we'll go ahead and we'll move on to the next resolution, 2024-5, urging additional government reforms recommended by the Commission to improve standards of conduct. Once again, I've asked everybody to look at this before we go. Right, huh? So do we have any discussions on this? Go ahead, um, Bob, Board member Armstrong.
Uh, thank you. I, I would ask that the author of the resolution just provide a paragraph of information for the public.
Okay, go ahead, um, Russ, go ahead. I'll let you take care of this. No, no, you go ahead and take care of it. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. So, uh, uh, this is also known as the Foley Commission. I think it came out in 2022. Um, actually, so just want to point out that, um, Representative Elect Iwamoto, uh, was discussing with our Chair and was advocating strongly for a resolution of this nature. So after discussing, uh, Chair Carvalho is, uh, extremely passionate about it. We're just looking to propose that the legislature, uh, consider additional, uh, Foley Commission recommendations that they haven't passed at this point.
Anyone else has any questions? You first took a look at it, correct? Go ahead, um, Representative Ela Kim Iwamoto?
Oh, I don't, I'm sorry, my, I forgot to pull my hand down from the previous, um, resolution.
Okay, thank you. Kevin.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, two things come to mind first. I just wonder how the good Mr. Isakane knew of your interest in the bill or the resolution, rather. Secondly, I just wonder if there could be a little bit of an expansion about exactly what the resolution is attempting to accomplish. It seems that there's a little bit of vagueness in it itself. I know there was a reference made to, uh, some name that was associated with this bill or the format, format of it in the past. Um, but again, I just, I don't feel that there's enough there for us to know or that we are qualified to provide opinions on this. Thank you.
Any other, um, then I go, any other, um, one has a question on this bill? You guys read it, correct? If you didn't understand it, it's how you anyone have any questions? All right, so this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to pull this off for now and I'm going to redefine this next, for next month, okay? Huh? Yeah, they'll give you time to look at it, okay? So we'll go ahead and pull this and we'll bring this one up next month, all right? All right. No, 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 no. Okay, all right, so next we'll go ahead, um, we'll move on to our elected of elected officials Congressman Ed Case, Representative. Not seeing him, we'll go on and move on to Governor. Uh, you're, you're, Ed Case is Representative.
Yes, yes, there's two of us.
Okay, your name and then go ahead.
Hi, everyone, my name is Mallory Meister. Um, thank you, board members, for allowing us to be here tonight. Um, like I said, my name is Mallory. I work for Congressman Case as a staff assistant in his DC office. Um, again, thank you for your time tonight. We just wanted to provide some quick updates. Um, my colleague Jackie, who is also on the call, is going to post the Congressman's quarter three neighborhood board report, um, in the chat for you all, so you can have that accessible. Um, and then, as always, Congressman Case's website is the best place to find latest information. Um, and any assistance requests, you can also find the neighborhood board report under the newsroom tab. Um, and I'll pass this over to Jackie.
Hi, everybody, I'm Jackie Davis. Thank you all for having us tonight. Um, I also work in the Congressman's DC office. Um, just wanted to update that the Congressman's Service Academy nomination process is open to applicants until October 11th. Um, and his congressional app challenge is open until October 24th. Um, and if anyone has any questions regarding eligibility or any questions about either of those, uh, programs, I'm happy to take that back to the office.
All right, thank you, appreciate that. Anyone in the library present have any questions for the Representative of Ed Case? Congressman Ed Case? None, here and not, not seen on, anyone online? Not seeing anyone online at this time? We go, any board members have any questions? We start off with Robert Armstrong, Board member Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and thank you, Jacqueline and Mallory, for being part of us. And especially if you're calling from the East Coast, uh, appreciate the late night you're having or late more or early morning.
We're here, we're in Honolulu this week, so it's good.
Okay, all right. It takes the mystique away. But nonetheless, I wanted to compliment, um, your participation here and encourage it in the future and ask that the Congressman, who has been doing such wonderful talk stories across the island and his district, if he could consider coming downtown Chinatown for his next talk story. He keeps missing our neighborhood, one side or the other. And, um, we'd like to bring people, you know, to our community. And, uh, there's lots of venues, um, particularly HPU. I'm thinking of off the top of my head, it has a wonderful facility. Um, will you consider, um, having the next talk, round of talk stories here in downtown Chinatown?
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I mean, we can definitely pass this along. Um, obviously, his schedule is very busy, but we're happy to pass that along for you and especially your praise.
All right, thank you. Next, we have board member Isakane.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for, uh, making an appearance. I think in the next couple of years, many of them are going to be coming to the end of their terms. Uh, these are the infamous leases with, I think, $1 nominal fees, a lot of environmental issues. I was just curious if, um, you know, if, if you had any information, what will be the Congressman's involvement in the renewal of these leases? And maybe what's his stance, what's he going to be advocating for on our behalf?
Yeah, um, very complicated issue with a lot of facets to it. Um, neither one of us handles the defense portfolio. Um, I do know there's a lot of works going on at the moment, but we don't have a specific answer for you all yet, but there is work going on.
All right, um, thank you on that, anyone else? Not here and none, not seen on, so I'm going to um, jump on Bob Armstrong's comment also. First of all, before I jump on that, for the questions that were asked, may I ask that you send to me those questions answered by Ed Case, so we can give it relayed back to our people? Also, if you could ask, um, Congressman Ed Case, that Chair Carvalho is asking that he actually come to visit us in person, yes? We'd like to see him here sometime, all right? We do appreciate that, all right? Other than that, thank you very much, because this is, I think, the first time we've seen the Representative in quite a while from Ed Case, all right? Thank you very much, ladies, have a good. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome, next, we have Governor Josh Bree's Representative, Stephen Downs, please go ahead, Stephen.
Good evening, uh, to answer the questions from last month. First one came from a community member, can we have an independent, I'm sorry, is that better? All right. I don't know, I was so tall, all right. Okay. Uh, can we have an independent government agency monitor Hawaiian Electric as it does its investigation into the power outages in Chinatown in July? That would be the State Public Utilities Commission, which says it formally asked HECO to respond to our questions about the outage. After HECO provides complete and accurate information about the cause of the outage, the PUC will ask HECO to report on their plans for preventative measures. Additionally, customers may file damage claims with Hawaiian Electric. If a customer is not satisfied after contacting HECO, they may also file an informal complaint with the PUC. And I think in the um, report I submitted, there are links to both of those. Second question comes from Board Member Shubert Quoc. HECO is providing twenty thousand dollars to the Chinese Chamber of Commerce and five thousand dollars to the Chinatown Improvement District for event promotion education programs for small businesses. Can the Governor's Office take a look at this? The PUC is aware of HECO's donation, if the Board is concerned, it can inquire with the organizations as to how the funding is used. Furthermore, the Board can also contact the PUC to express its concerns. This from Board Member Li, the third question. When will the tower be open to the public? The Aloha Tower, this comes from the Department of Transportation. The Aloha Tower Observation Deck was closed to visitors during the COVID nineteen pandemic and remains closed to the public while DOT seeks bids to repair the elevator for public use and make necessary improvements to the fire suppression system. A two-point-three million dollar award for replacement of the fire suppression system has been made and DOT is undergoing the procurement process for the elevator repairs. Work is scheduled to start this fall and all floors of the tower will be closed during the construction period. In addition, DOT is preparing for the September twenty twenty-six celebration of the centennial anniversary of the Aloha Tower's opening and is seeking federal funds to support the renovation of the observation deck and repairs to the tower's exterior. These, the renovations and repairs are not structural in nature and are intended to keep the historic and iconic landmark in a state of good repair. Planned renovations to the observation deck include replacement of restroom fixtures and installation of interpretive signage. DOT plans to reopen the observation deck once the elevator and fire suppression system projects and the observation deck renovation are complete. There was no date given. This comes from Board Member Isakane. At Koala Basin last month, there was a really bad incident in which commercial divers just dropped an anchor on the reef and dragged it up. I know DLNR is investigating, can we get a follow-up? This comes from DLNR, approximately two hundred corals have been reattached to a positively anchor damaged area of Koala Basin seafloor by DLNR Division of Aquatic Resources Biologists and Staff, along with members of the Kulianna Coral Restoration, a nonprofit group. On July five, five DAR divers investigated the damage and righted seventy-four large coral colonies for immediate restoration efforts. The following week, what are known as Corals of Opportunity, which are broken pieces, were collected and moved to temporary storage sites for future preparation and transplanting. These corals were fitted with stainless steel pins and hybrid epoxy adhesive. Restoration sites for reattachment were selected near the impact area based on similar and suitable habitat types. Divers were able to reattach approximately two hundred to two feet. There were fewer than a dozen corals that were too large to reattach. DAR and Kulianna Coral Restoration will conduct follow-up checks and surveys to assess the long-term success of the restoration. Now I can take any other questions you have.
So before we move any further on that, so to all board members, all these questions answered are on the Google Drive, yeah? So to speed things up, we can always look at the Google Drive and get going, so we can go to questions. Anyone in the audience have any questions for the governance representative? Huh? Anyone online have any questions for the governance representative? Besides board members, all right, so any board member here has a question? All right, I see that Board Member Li, go ahead, Board Member Li, you may ask your question.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Downs, please forgive me if you'd already presented this on the file that's now on the Google Drive as the Chair mentioned, but were you able to ascertain what those concrete bunkers were across from Queen's Hospital?
I will have to get back to you on that, I have that in my notes.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Board Member Isakane.
Hi, uh, I love the response on DLNR. My question this month is about tourism from Japan. Uh, I think there was March twenty twenty-four, the governor did a press release saying that he was going to work with Hawaii DOT to lower barriers to travel between Japan and Hawaii. Now, I just want to share an anecdote, this past month, I had a friend and his family visiting from Japan and said they were subjected to enhanced screening by Customs and Border Patrol. Um, you know, and my friend said, hey, he and his family travel a lot, they've heard this from their other friends from Japan as well. Now, my understanding is, uh, the recent DBED report says we're still down fifty percent from post-pandemic visitors from Japan. I know it's a really important segment for us, so I just wanted to know, is the governor aware of any trend with Customs and Border Protection just doing this enhanced screening and is there a reason why?
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much, I do appreciate it, all right, thank you. All right, next, we have Mayor Rick Blangiardi's Representative, Ian Sante, Ian. Before you even get going, um, can I interject that if we can go ahead and answer, um, Robert Quateros' question that he's asked several months ago that hasn't been answered, yeah? Okay, go ahead, Ian.
That is which one, Chair, just to make sure, I got about like over twelve questions I'm referring to, so which is the one that that question is, so you can, I can just skip straight to it, do you know what the one is that?
So Robert, um, several months ago had asked, and I emailed to you about the bus route, I believe it's a one fifty-one, being able to go ahead and go up to that hospital, uh, because it stopped right there, the rest stop is right there in front of their residency, yeah? And so they're asking that it goes further up to, so they'd be able to get to the hospital, yeah? If, um, be, Robert can ask you this again, all right, but.
Yeah, I don't, I'm a little, he can ask it and I apologize, I did see that, yeah, it came yesterday and I didn't get an answer back from DTS yesterday in regards to that, so, um, if he can ask it again and I will double make sure it is on the thing next, because I do not have that through my list of questions. So if he can, uh, again, apologize and if we can ask that, we'll have the neighborhood assistant take it down and we'll make sure we get it back to him.
He wants a good one.
All right, go ahead, um, uh, Mr. Sante, you go ahead and answer, you can go ahead and your questions.
Okay, no problem, so, uh, the first one is requesting road signage on Hotel Street. Uh, the Department of Facility Maintenance will investigate, replace and vandalize any faded traffic signs on Hotel Street. Uh, the Department of Transportation will conduct an investigation to act, assess Hotel Street for the conditions of existing signage that informs motorists of the bike bus lanes only on this corridor. And the Department of Transportation will inform the Board of the status upon the completion of their investigation. Uh, question related to five four five Queen Street damage. Uh, the Department of Facility Maintenance reviewed the photos of the empty dirt plots in the sidewalk fronting the Honu Akaha senior housing and determined that these are private tree planters where the trees may have died and the private property owner may have removed them. This is private property owner's responsibility to address the safety and the hazard on the private property. The feedback request on Nuano Ave, the Department of Transportation will be investigating the Board's concern on Nuano Ave between North Vineyard and South School Streets, which may require research site inspections, a speed survey and analysis of the area's traffic collision history. Uh, Department of Transportation will apprise the Board of the status by the end of March twenty twenty-five. Question regarding to Skyline and Rail. The Department of Transportation, thank you for reaching out and your interest in the Skyline Rail project. Uh, we're delighted to hear that from engaged residents like yourself and we appreciate the opportunity to clarify the definition of successful interim service. Successful interim service refers to the period during which the Skyline Rail has been operational while we continue to complete the full project. And then Rail is operating over at ninety-nine percent efficiency for on-time and performance. The achievement is a testament to the hard work and dedication of everyone involved in this project. Regarding the concerns about ridership, we want to assure you that the drivers are showing steady use. Figures including the high ridership observed during the free weekend, providing a strong start for their system and were able for reporting purposes. Since then, ridership has remained stable and we have no indications of a decline. In fact, it's anticipated a positive increase as we approach the start of the upcoming academic year on Oahu, which brings more commuters and students using rail. Uh, question about trash pickup. Environmental Services has not modified its collection schedule. If a row is not serviced on the scheduled day, residents should leave their carts outside until servicing is completed. If there are any questions, please call eight oh eight seven six eight three two zero zero. Uh, question on the empty homes tax. The award has been made and is available on the state hands website. Hawaii Award and Notice Data System, the contract is in the process of being executed. Uh, question about the Fourth of July fireworks show. The Fourth of July fireworks show at Alamoana Beach Park in the past was hosted by Alamoana Center. Question about again Kamali Mini Park. There is an accurate record of the chain of custody maintained by the city for each parcel land. The parcel is under HFD. HFD has jurisdiction over Kamali Mini Park and documentation detailing the chain of custody. In regards to a record for the each parcel of public land, we defer to the Department of Land Management. Four four five North King. Um, the comprehensive update about an expanding homeless service was highlighted in Mayor Blangiardi's August twenty twenty-four newsletter, which you can view at honolulu.gov backslash mayor backslash newsletter. The homeless encampment near Kamamalu Neighborhood Park. Uh, from August twentieth to the twenty-seven, District One Patrol Office supported the park area. Uh, citations were issued on August twentieth for park closure, twenty-seventh for stored property, twenty-eight, two citations for littering. In addition, the above enforcement officers have engaged with those responsible for homeless encampments. If needed, the Kamamalu Park and the surrounding area will be scheduled for future stored property ordinance sidewalks nuisance, um, ordinance enforcement. A report to the Honolulu Police Department enforcement efforts will be presented at the next board meeting scheduled today. A comprehensive, again, you can go back and look at the news, the newsletter from the mayor. Um, the next question was regard to our corps team and response time issues. Again, that is my department, Honolulu Emergency Services Department, in response to Member Armstrong's question. Corps is not an immediate on service. If services are needed for immediate attention, we recommend everybody call nine one one. Corps gets a phone call, they assess the situation, and if they are already out helping a client, our services are very limited, our resources are very limited as we respond throughout the island, but we appreciate everybody calling us and we'll get to everybody in the timely manner that we are able to. Again, if an individual is in, appears to be in immediate then nine one one should be called. As for that specific incident, the individuals did not want services upon Corps' arrival, so the appearance did seem appeared as Member Armstrong pointed out, that they were just told to move by the bus stop. But when questioned by this Corps staff, they did not want any type of services. Um, the next one is a carryover question, Calming Assistance Resident with Tourette's. Um, and I, pending in action, I, that one is still pending a review by our department. I do not have any other questions to address at this time and we will follow up any other questions that are open, I have two that are still open. Um, I'm available for questions, Chair.
All right, so before we go any further, so were there all those questions from last month or from a cumulative amount?
I appear, it appears that there were a cumulative of questions that were not answered as well as from last month. Um, this is what I received from our neighborhood, so it appears that it's a bunch of questions for all, it's because yes, I don't know any other answers to that, give you.
That's all I needed to know, I do appreciate that, Mr. Sante, so just going forward, we're gonna keep this down to five minutes each, yeah? Uh, there's, there's no reason this section should go to ten minutes.
No, absolutely understood.
Yeah, but please send me, when you get your questions, send it to me, I'll upload it to the Google Drive, so everybody can take a look at it, because that's the right place to look at it. But we do have questions, we're gonna start off with, um, Bob Armstrong, please.
Uh, Mr. Chair, should we ask the public first or?
Yes, my fault.
Yeah.
Anyone in the public have any, um, questions to ask, no, anyone online? Robert, go ahead, Robert.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Chair and Board, yes, uh, Ian, I, I did post a question on the chat, so, uh, uh, if you can take, just, uh, record that, uh, so, and next month, if you can report on that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Robert, I appreciate that. All right. Mr. Bob Armstrong.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Sante, I don't know if there were two things that I want to bring up, and that was the perennial issue that is not getting any better of folks who are in the median of, um, admittedly a state highway, and that's Vineyard or Poly, but at that intersection, it's really not getting any better and, um, uh, it sure seems like with HPD going by and the, and this being in the city, that someone at the city needs to focus a little more attention. It's terrible for the neighbors in that area, and there are a lot of people who live there. But the other thing that was brought up today that I want to discuss with you and would like to have an answer from the city is Lieutenant Segusio, um, very clearly said that, uh, we might have those cameras operational, at least half of them, but we're not really, we're not recording them and we're just observing them. And he said, any questions about that or concerns needs to be directed to the city IT. So here's a great example of
Please wrap it up.
Yeah, of, of us implementing something without really thinking it through, and you've been warned from this neighborhood how to do that. So where are we on that situation? If you could bring those answers, because we really, this sounds like it's a very paper tiger at this point.
Thank you very much.
Understood, I will go back to you about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Sante, uh, this is a question that perhaps could be sent to Corp Council, but basically the highlighted in yellow here is asking if there is an elected or appointed official within the city webpage, for example, that could be felt to be discretionary against those, against, uh, that individual might need to judge or provide rulings on. I can send this to you by email if you can't do a screen cap now, but I'd just like to know if there's a policy that the city has for such, thank you.
I would appreciate if you sent by email, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, any other board members have any questions? Not seeing any, thank you, Mr. Sante, I'll go ahead and send you my own question through an email, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, you have a good day. Next, we're gonna go ahead and move on to City Council, District Chief Six, Tali de Santo Times Representative, Richmond, please, five minutes, Richmond.
Hi, guys, I'm really sorry, I'm trying to charge my phone right now, so, because my phone's.
Hi, guys. I'm really sorry. I'm trying to charge my phone right now, so, because my phone's about to die, so the, the angle's a little wonky. Um, I just wanted to give you guys four updates on different pieces of legislation that are coming through. Sorry, I'm gonna try to like bend over a little bit here. Um, the first one, or the first two is that we proposed two new bills, um, in the last, uh, in the last week. Uh, Bill fifty one, which is relating to adaptive reuse. So this is another shot at, uh, Bill twenty one from last year. Um, this one has the buy-in of, uh, DPP, um, and it was actually floated to us, and we expect. In the next month or two to be engaging stakeholders on making sure that it, uh, that it works well. Um, the second one is Bill fifty two, which is relating to e-bikes. Um, as, as we all know, we've seen the, uh, we've seen the news stories for e-bikes and, and the dangers that they pose islandwide. Um, so we proposed this bill with Councilmember Tolba, um, to, uh, that is modeled after, um, some legislation that, uh. Around forty states have adopted, um, so that we can bring Honolulu into the twenty first century and, and really, uh, have some, some best, best practices in, in, in terms of, uh. Protecting, uh, protecting some of our youth. Uh, two other updates, uh, that weren't proposed recently, but, uh, are the speed limits bill. Um, to reduce the speed limits around schools, that bill's gonna be heard, uh, in the Transportation Committee later this month. Uh, the committee wasn't able to convene last month, but, um, it's gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna start moving on now. And then, uh, the Game Rooms Task Force, um, that was passed via Resolution twenty four dash one four three. Um, they've met a couple of times and their report is gonna come out hopefully sometime next month. That's it for me and, um, open to any questions from anyone.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience here in the library that has any questions? For Representative Tyler Santos. Rep Richmond. Not anyone online. Besides board members. Uh, not seeing any. We'll go ahead to Board Member Li, please.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Luzar, can you definitively say with your mention to the e-bikes, are e-bikes legal on city sidewalks? And if they are, can you change that in the bill? Thank you.
We are, are gonna assess as part of all of it, um. Uh, where they're going to be allowed, but my guess would be no. I, uh, I talked to Roger about this yesterday, uh, Director Morton. Um, and we're going to probably put together a stakeholder group in tandem with the bill so that we can get it right.
All right, thank you. Next is Board Member Laurie McCarney.
Hi, Richmond. I think a lot of the e-bike stuff is really defining all these different kinds of personal mobility devices, you know, because we are. If we ride a bike or we walk, we get scraps left over from, um, cars. And, uh, that's what's causing the issue. I think, um, I'm wondering if. Using of our vehicles is a greater risk to the population than e-bikes. And I don't know if there's anything that we can do to assess higher fees or something to discourage. Uh, when I'm on my bike, I know drivers can't see me because their car is so high. I sit below their, um, hood. So that's something I think if we're talking about danger to pedestrians and we're talking about danger to bicyclists, that's a much higher risk than e-bikes.
Yeah, I would say, I, I think it's a good point and it's something that, that we can look into. Um, the one comment I'd make on the e-bikes themselves is, is we have some of these e-bikes that are going like fifty or sixty miles an hour. Um, and there isn't anything expressly written in ordinance that would require the use of a helmet or, um. Where they're able to be, to be, uh, ridden, so it makes it more. Easy to enforce some of the bad actors. Um, so, you know, that's kind of what's going into, going into this bill.
Go ahead, do a follow up.
Yeah, so the follow-up, and I was working on this even when I was at Beiki or Hawaii Bicycling League, is defining the different vehicles. Um, so bicycles are different than pedal assist bicycles, are different than scooters, are different than mopeds. And all of that is way overdue, so thank you for taking a look at that and focusing on those definitions and then what belongs where.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, go ahead, Board Member McDonald, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, uh, also for the council's representative for being here. Uh, my question, uh, I think it's nice that we're all concerned about the e-bikes. Um, and it's fun and it's kind of new, but I'm really, the real danger here that I am experiencing and. It, it's long overdue to be addressed is the, our roads themselves. Um, we, there was a recent national survey done and Honolulu and Hawaii ranked in the bottom three. In the entire country for the state of our roads, uh, for the state of our roads. And it's also pretty well known that Honolulu is one of the highest taxed cities in the country. Particularly when it comes to vehicles and gasoline and the things that pay for our roadways. And our roads are atrocious. The real danger, I myself ride a scooter. And I ride, when I'm riding down the road, there are so many potholes, even our men. Three inches deep, and you go over them, and I'm practically launched from my vehicle from going over these things. And, uh, there are so many potholes. What is the councilman doing to address the horrendous? State of our roads in the state and why is so much money being generated? And yet we still land in the bottom three of, uh, the roads, state of the roads in the country. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, yeah, we, we've had a couple of budget amendments in the last, uh, in the last couple of budget cycles relating to roads specifically. One of the things I'll add is like the, the, the gas tax, for example, does not come to the city. And we're the ones who, who have to, uh, who have to pave the roads, and I, I believe registration doesn't either. I may, I may be wrong about that one though, but, um, a lot of these like. The specific revenue generators, um, aren't, aren't given to the bodies that, that actually have to, uh. To, to administer them and pave these roads, which, which is not, um, it shouldn't be an excuse for, uh. For it not getting done, um, but I just wanted to add that and, uh, uh, it's, it's, it's definitely something that, um. That we take into consideration every budget cycle, um, and will continue to.
All right, thank you, Richmond. I'm also gonna ask you to keep everything to the point, and if not, if you have to. Then you can always send us the message back like everyone else has been doing. Go ahead, do a follow up.
So just quickly to follow up, I'd like, again, as I ride a scooter, it's so dangerous. Because I can't watch the cars in front of me, because I have to keep my eyes on the road directly in front of my front tire. To watch out for potholes and things like, so I can't even see brake lights or anything like that. So my question is. Uh, I'd like for the councilman to come back with us in the next month or two with what his plan is. To improve our roads, which are again nationally ranked in the bottom three. So I'd like for him to come up with some sort of a plan to address this situation, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDonald. All right. Next, do we have anyone else? So, um. Vice Chair, um, Sean Fitzsimmons has a question, please.
Oh, um, I, I took my, my hat on, I posted, uh, the ordinance in the chat.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Richmond, thank you very much. You go ahead and have a great night. All right?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, bye bye. All right, next up, we're gonna go. Next up, we're gonna go ahead, we say Senator Carl Rhodes, Representative. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen and members of the board. My name is Braden Chung and I am currently a. Office Assistant with, uh, Senator Carl Rhodes, and today he would just like to give. An update on the status of COVID nineteen. So yesterday, the Department of Health reported four hundred and eighty new COVID cases. With a seven day average of seventy two cases and eight deaths for that weekly period. The state is still seeking the impact of the recent surge in COVID cases. Senator Rhodes encourages you to stay up to date on your COVID shots as well as your flu shots. If you're over sixty, there's a vaccine for respiratory, uh. C, excuse me, let me, uh, let me, uh, pronounce this word correctly.
Sinusial.
I, I believe it's sinus, uh, sinusial, uh, virus, which is also a good idea to get. A new update, uh, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, uh, COVID vaccine has been approved for use. The vaccine is not meant to prevent every COVID variant, rather. The aim is to protect against severe illnesses, hospitalization and death. They also restored and enhanced protection from previous shots, which has declined over time. And if you have any, uh, bills you would like to suggest, uh, for the next session. Uh, Senator Rhodes and his office are preparing, uh, currently for the next session. And you can contact him via phone, uh, number and, uh, email. So his phone number would be eight oh eight. Five eight six six one three zero. And his email is the following. Uh, senroads, S E N R H O A D S at capital dot hawaii dot gov. And if you have any questions, uh. Now is the time, uh, you can let me know and I will be able to relay these questions, uh, back to Senator Rhodes. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. So we do have his phone number and we do have his email address on hand, yeah? All right, we do appreciate that. Okay, so is there anyone in our library? Has any questions for Senator Rhodes, Representative? Seeing none? Anyone online? Seeing none? Anyone on our board? Okay, we're gonna start off real quick with, um, Mr. McDonald. And one minute, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the representative of Senator Rhodes for being here, although. I have to say that I'm very disappointed at his constant, uh, pestering us about. The COVID nineteen situation, which is every, virtually every federal government restriction on COVID nineteen. Has been lifted and is no longer a public health concern, or at least a major. Country or the state of Hawaii. Uh, I, I would like to know what the Senator has to say about some of the more pressing issues. That we've been talking about here in our meeting today. There's not a single person here mentioned COVID nineteen. But there were several, several other concerns that, that our community is concerned about. Would the Senator like to make any comment on any of these concerns and how he's trying to, uh, help us address them? Instead of something that we're, nobody, it's over and nobody really is concerned about.
Ten seconds.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll go ahead to Board Member Isukani.
Uh, yes, thanks, thanks for being here representing the Senator. Um, so as the Chair of the Senate Judiciary Committee, I know the Senator has supported public finance. I'm just wondering with the upcoming session, what are the other legislative reforms that he'll be pushing for? Is he gonna be trying to reintroduce, uh, public financing? I know Civil Beat did a lot of stories around, uh, campaign contributions for contractors, specifically families. Um, of the owners and the key employees. So that's been one that's talked about a lot. Um, others have mentioned the power of committee chairs to be able to kill or defer a bill unilaterally. So just wondering legislative reforms, what, what will the Senator be pushing for his roles?
All right, thank you. Next, we have Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair. And Braden, uh, you mentioned requests for ideas for legislation. Perhaps, uh, if you could share with the Senator, can, one thing that I get from constituents is. Uh, emotional support animals going in places and restaurants and food preparation areas. Is there any way outside or underneath or within the confines of current federal legislation? That he or the legislature would be willing to consider, and if not, do we need to pass this up to Senator Schatz and Representative Case? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other board members that have any questions? All right, not hearing any other questions. I want to thank you very much. And when you get those questions back. Oh, Sean, Sean, last minute. Well, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, bud. Uh, yeah, sorry, um, I just wanted to follow up, uh, you know, Ross's question, uh, reminded me of, um. The Senator's work on, uh, six six one B, um, the wrongful conviction statute. Um, we've had some discussion, it's been the news about how he drafted that, um, piece of law and how it's ambiguous and now it's, uh, rendered. Ineffective. Uh, he reported to the board that he would be working on making amendments to, uh, six six one B. I was wondering if you could provide any updates at the next hearing, so what those amendments would be. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much, Sean. All right, so. This is gonna be the end of it. I thank you very much. So with all those questions asked, right? As soon as you get back the information, go ahead and please send it to myself and I'll go ahead and get it. Load it up to Google Drive so everyone can see these questions before the next meeting, all right? We'd appreciate that. Okay, you have a good day and we'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next we're gonna move on to State House District twenty six, Scott Saki. Uh, my God, he's reporting today, I believe it's uploaded, right? And I, I'll double check because it just came in late today. And next we have State House District twenty eight, Daniel Ho. Do you have a representative here, Daniel? Nope. All right, we'll go ahead and move on. We're going on to. Um, quarterly reports, number nine, three minutes, please. Honolulu Board Water Supply, usually Irish.
I'm here, I was online. Hopefully one minute. So I passed out the supply. Water. So this event is on Saturday, September twenty eighth. From ten AM to two PM at the Kapolei Regional Park. This is for online people too. Um, so come join the Border Water Supply and the various city and state agencies and the community agent, communities too, community agencies. And organizations for the day full of, I gotta read this, activities that focus on the value of water. Interactive exhibits, including rain barrel workshops, zero escape plant craft activities. Succulent mini workshops and more. Those be some Onu food. And for purchase, and admission is free for all ages, kekiksu kapuna. So go to borderwatersupply.com for, uh, slash one dot water, one water Hawaii, excuse me, Border Water Supply slash. One Water Hawaii for more information. Sorry that I keep going in and out on the sound.
No, no, you're fine.
Yeah, so, and, um, so I know I'm quarterly now, so the December, I understand. Thanks for the email.
So I was gonna ask if you got the email.
Yeah.
And just to let me know, like, if you need to come before then, you let me know, okay?
Okay, so.
And then I'll just get you back on.
Thank you, so I might be on vacation December, so I may send someone else.
Okay, all right, okay, that's, that won't be no problem.
Thanks.
Okay, because our recess is in January, yeah?
Okay.
So yes, um, do we have any questions from anyone in the library? Seeing none? Anyone online? Seeing none? Any board member has a question? No, not, all right, and you have a good vacation.
Thank you.
Oh. Sean, do you have a question or is your hand just still up? No question, yes.
Thank you. Not this year, next year.
All right, see you. Okay, bye bye. Thank you, Iris. All right, next, we're gonna go with, um. White Department of Transportation, HBOT Highways Division.
Hi, um, Chair, um, can you see my screen, Chair?
Yes, you've got three minutes, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, Chair Cavalli and members of the Downtown Chinatown Urban Board, Casey Iver from the State DOT Highways Division. I'll be your new state highways representative and will be attending your monthly meetings. I just have one item to share with you folks tonight. On the front page of the June twenty first star advertising, the State DOT set out a lawsuit called Navahini versus State DOT. With a group of young plaintiffs, many of them high school students. Who accuse the State DOT of not doing enough to address climate or greenhouse gas emissions. That is causing climate change and will ruin their future livelihoods and their right to clean and healthy environment. The lawsuit was filed back on June first, twenty twenty two. The settlement affirmed that the DOT commitment to implement transformative changes in Hawaii's transportation system. With the goal of achieving net zero emissions by twenty forty five across all transportation modes, highways, harbors, airports, within the state. A group of, uh, the group of Hawaii U plaintiffs with support from our children's trust and earth justice. Claimed that the state's per capita greenhouse emissions from Hawaii's transportation sector are rising. And anticipates to make up to sixty percent of the state greenhouse gas emission by twenty thirty. Some of the requirements the State DOT will be implemented as part of the settlement agreement. Are within one year, our DOT will create a greenhouse gas reduction plan. Showing how Hawaii transportation system will be more environmentally friendly. showing how Hawaii's transportation system will be more environmentally friendly over the next twenty years. The plan will include five-year benchmarks and performance metrics for years twenty, thirty, thirty-five, forty and forty-five. These five-year interim targets include reducing vehicle mileage travel, reducing the number of single occupancy vehicles, expanding multimodal transportation options such as public transit, pedestrian bikeways, pathways and bikeways, adding more public charging stations for electric vehicles, increasing the use of zero carbon alternative fuel like hydrogen for ground, air and marine transportation. The DOT will be incorporating the complete street policies and information about complete street improvements for each project will be readily available to the public. HDOT will produce an annual report compiling individual projects and detailing its progress in reducing the greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle mileage travel. HDOT will plant at least one thousand trees every year to help draw down the carbon in the atmosphere and whenever feasible, plant native trees and shrubs. And HDOT will develop and implement a program for public education, outreach and community engagement and partnerships to support our greenhouse gas reduction plan and related transportation decarbonization work. Additional information will be provided at future neighborhood board meetings. This is a major transportation shift for the DOT, especially for the highways division. We hope to partner with the neighborhood boards and our elected officials to successfully implement this multi-year settlement. This concludes my report. If board members or elected officials have any concerns about the state highways, they can email me. I would greatly appreciate it if you can include pictures or Google map location of your concerns. I can take questions at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So just for future references, three minutes, we'll include questions also. I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with questions going now. So any questions from anyone in our library? None? Any questions from anyone online? See none? Any board member has a question? Okay, we're gonna start off with Lori McCorn first.
Yes, I know a percentage of the federal funds, highway funds are allocated for multimodal transportation and bikeways. My experience has been is that there's been an excuse not to do those. And can you follow up maybe perhaps and let us know what bike way, pedestrian pathways are going to be, are in the pipeline for execution? Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Rossi Sukani, your question next.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. Thank you for coming. I think we overheard that highway deaths are down to twenty compared to thirty-eight from last year. So I just want to say, I mean, I know the director was, he did a pedestrian, but I know Ed Sniffin was a big part of that. So just thank you for what you're doing. That's great progress.
Board Member McDonald, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for being here. I was pretty hard on our city council representative earlier about the state of our roads. The recent study talking about Hawaii's roads being in the bottom three of the country includes our state highways. And so I would like to know, while I appreciate all the fun stuff and sexy fun it is to take care of our priority is to make our roads functional and they are not. They are in an atrocious condition and like I said, ranked in the bottom three in the country. So let's talk a little bit the next time you're here about what you're doing to bring up those standards and get our roads to at least a monicum of functionality, which will probably also help the environment because it won't take two hours to get from one side of Honolulu to the other. So could you please come back with some information on how you're gonna improve all actual roads the next time you're here? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Anyone else have a question to ask? All right. So those are the questions. If you can go ahead and answer those questions and email it to me, I would appreciate it. I'll put it up in our Google document, but definitely if you can come down and answer these questions, they'll be great. Okay? Thank you. All right. Next, we're gonna go ahead and move to Monica Villages. Greg Payton, three minutes, please.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chair. And thank you, thank you, Board. My name is Greg Payton. I serve as CEO for Metal of Kaku. One of our programs is Safe Haven, now called Monica Villages. We serve thirty-three homeless residents now in permanent supported housing. We just celebrated one year in the new location, providing only permanent supported housing. We've gotten also good feedback from the community. If you have any feedback from me about the project, my email is on the agenda. Our housing programs and homeless programs in general have housed sixty-two people, homeless people since January of this year. One thing I'm not sure if people are aware of, HPD has been conducting homeless encampment sweeps, which began Monday, August twenty-sixth, based on the grants passed Oregon US Supreme Court legal precedent. If you have questions about that, please email me. Again, my email is on the agenda. I'll talk more about that at another meeting if necessary. I wanted to also mention that next month in October, I would like to, I've asked Chair if I could give a brief presentation on a couple of new projects we have and I wanted to bring, make sure everybody's aware of it. So that'll be in October. That's my report. If you have any of the questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? See no one in the audience except our good friend there? Anyone online? Not seen one, anyone online? Any board members? Nope. All right. Thank you, Greg. I am putting you on the agenda to present, yeah?
Thank you so much.
I need, okay? Thank you. All right. Next, we'll go ahead and we're moving on to HRT. We should have Marissa Gonzalez. Marissa, three minutes, please.
Hello. Good evening, Chair Carvallo, Board Members and Community Members. My name is Marissa Gonzalez. I'm with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. We're currently onboarding a new team member, so you may see another phase providing updates soon. Joining me this evening is Patrick Watson from HART's contractor, Frank V. Caluccio Construction. I'll go ahead and start with my update first. On August fifteenth, we awarded a major contract to Tuduparini Corporation for the design and construction of the next segment. The city center guideway and station segment includes six rail stations and approximately three miles of elevated rail from the Middle Street Transit Center to Civic Center Station. The design work is expected to start in mid-September with construction anticipated to begin twenty twenty-five. Important milestone and the team is really looking forward to Tuduparini to complete this phase of work. So HART continues utility relocation work along Dillingham and downtown. For downtown utility relocation due to unforeseen utility conflicts, the completion of the downtown utility relocation timeline has been delayed a little bit to the first quarter of twenty twenty-five for additional utility work. Segment three completion, however, is still expected in twenty thirty-one. That concludes my update. Thank you, Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board Chair and Board Members. For more information about HART, please visit honolulutransit.org. You can also call our project hotline, eight oh eight five six six two two nine nine. So now I will hand it over to Patrick Watson for traffic updates for downtown Chinatown.
All right, Patrick, you got a minute, thirty seconds, please. Thank you.
Mahalo, Chair. Thank you, Marissa. Thank you, Board Members, members of the community. Patrick Watson with Public Information Management from Onua Consulting. And as Marissa alluded to, the downtown utility relocation work is going to be continuing through to the first quarter of next year, twenty twenty-five. And so that is basically the main point of my update is that Caluccio will be continuing to work downtown through Nimitz Corridor up to Halekuila Street. And as I mentioned in previous e-updates, if you have additional questions, I posted the information in the chat for our weekly e-blast update. So that's the best way to keep informed with all of the updates that we currently have. And this is brand new information as of this week. So again, our updates cover all of the construction notices and updates. And we also have the email available if you have any specific questions about the work taking place on Nimitz and Halekuila Street. So thank you very much and have a wonderful evening. Aloha.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from our public? See none here. Anyone online? See none? We'll go ahead. Bob Armstrong.
Patrick and Marissa, for your presentations as we move into twenty twenty-five, obviously, this is gonna be more germane and more impactful for our neighborhood, which is a question for Marissa. This contract that you just mentioned that was let, that includes now our neighborhood, the contract does include the Chinatown station that is part of that deal that you just mentioned?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, because this is our neighborhood and it needs to be explicitly said. So we're on the move. Again, what are the dates? And thank you very much.
The dates for the
The projected timeline of, I mean, you let the contract and it hasn't been awarded yet, correct?
Yes, it was, it was awarded.
It was awarded and so then what's the timeline after that the neighborhood wants?
Well, the design work is expected to start in mid-September, which is very soon. So later this month and the construction, the actual construction is anticipated to begin in twenty twenty-five.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Board Member McFanny.
Patrick, when are you gonna get the equipment out in front of Nimitz and Bethel? That's been there. I thought that was not gonna take so long, but it's really horrible bottleneck there for lots of people.
I understand and thank you for the question. So part of the extension of the work for Caluccio is due to unforeseen conditions when they do the excavation and the trenching for their utility relocation work. They run into some obstacles that weren't necessarily according to plans. So that's part of the work. They identify obstacles and they determine like the redesign to get around those obstacles. And it's unfortunately happening up in Harbor Court on Bethel. But they are working to get those, you know, obstacles and issues resolved as quickly as possible. So there was kind of a holdup there, but they're now moving pretty quickly. So I understand your frustration, but they are working really hard to get that done.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. McDonald. One minute to ask a question.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, Ms. Gonzalez for being here. I received, I asked a question and got a very frustrating answer from your predecessor. So I'm just gonna go over this quickly with you. I'm sorry to dump it on you, but I don't have any other resource. About two months ago, I asked Harry about the Dillingham Boulevard and its atrocious state of repair. I asked why it has already been this way for over a year. Why can't the work be done in smaller sections instead of having the entirety of its length rendered practically useless? When you thought we might see this part of the project reach completion so that the road might be traversable without having to have the suspension of your, on your vehicle repaired? Harry's answer to me was simply, sorry, that's just the way it has to be. It will be this way for at least the next five years and that I needed to accept that. Well, after a month of contemplating that answer, it occurred to me that I don't have to accept that. But in fact, I do have a right to demand why you claim it must be this way. So for this reason, I'm asking you today as the representative of HART that you reach out to your superiors and ask them on behalf of our concerned citizens, who made this decision about Dillingham Boulevard?
Ten seconds to finish up.
Why they feel it is justified to make this entire stretch of road nearly impossible to traverse for a period of five years or more if the history of this project is any standard by which to form our expectations? And if any other options were considered?
Time, please. Thank you. All right. Thank you. You can go ahead and answer this question now.
Well, I just, I just want to say and thank you for the question, Mr. McDonald.
He wants you to get back to him.
Okay. Okay.
I was gonna say is I prefer that you send the representative from HART, who's responsible for this part of the decision, to address this very big concern of our neighborhood.
Sure, sure. Okay.
All right. Okay. Thank you. So we do understand that. No, no, but she's probably not gonna even be here because she's not our representative.
Well, I maybe. Yes, correct. But I
If I may, if I may clarify just quickly, what I asked is for the person who's responsible for the decision of blocking off and repairing all of Dillingham for eight years, if that person would come to our board and explain to us why they feel that it has to be done that way.
Okay, understood.
Thank you for letting me clarify.
No, no problem. Understood. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Downtown Business Community Association, Shulon is no longer here, but her information is on the Google Drive. We're gonna go ahead and move to Neighborhood Board Citizen Patrol, Kevin Li. You got your three minutes. Thank you.
Chair, thank you very much. We'll have a very brief presentation here from observations from the patrol for the past month. We did see some good things happening. This is the back park area behind the YMCA along Queen Emma Boulevard. Looks like this may have been the core team coming by to investigate the large encampment there and the clothes drying facility there. And I think they provided some service. But it just goes to show that there are the population of folks in our neighborhood that do need different types of help. And again, our theme is to try to get the right type of help to the different folks. You know, someone who's on the sidewalk, blocking it, standing up, punching the sky, clearly has some needs. And so we do make the efforts to try to cause the right hope for them versus someone who's doing a fentanyl face plant next to Yilani Palace. A different set of help is needed for these folks. We really need to target our assistance. Watch out for your bus stations that become campgrounds. But again, as family can recall, the comments by Lieutenant Saguscho earlier about the pallet palaces and the there. I raised this picture just to show that the cars and everyone is having to divert around these structures. It's obliterating the sidewalk and really obstructing the pathways for folks who may otherwise need to legitimately use the sidewalks. So let's all keep that in mind, but also be safe. One never knows what could pop out of these areas, including dogs that might bite you on the calf, for example. So getting on to our bird population, yes, it is true that Kamali Mini Park has some persistent bird feeders. The birds will survive without us. They do have their overlords coming. And again, remind everyone to come with us to the Neighborhood Patrol second Tuesday every month. We'll depart from seven PM Diamond Head Tower Lobby of Kakuila Plaza. Bring your camera and friends. We'll make sure everyone sees what needs to be seen. We will be no host through December twenty twenty-four. Look forward to seeing everyone in a couple of months. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Board Member Li. Appreciate that. Do we have anyone online who has a question that is not not a board member? Nope, not seen that. Do we have, did you have a question? Nope, not seen that. Okay, Robert, do you have a question? Go ahead and ask your question, please.
Yes, I have a question, Chair. Thank you. Can you please explain what a no host means?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Cortero. Just to let you know that the event will be occurring, but I will not be hosting the event directly. But I welcome you to join with others who will be departing from the same site and as always, to collect pictures that you might see around town anytime during the month and route them to me by email. That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Board Member Li. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Not hearing none? Not hearing any? Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go to approve, approval of minutes, yeah? So minutes were posted. If you had anything that you wanted to make corrections of, you should put it, have put it on that section where it's at. So we're gonna go ahead and start this discussion on Tuesday, July second, twenty twenty-four. Regular meeting minute written summary for video record. And just in case, I do have an email about how minutes can be handled, yeah? So anybody who wants to see it. But anyway, we're gonna go ahead and start with Ross Isukani, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I know we're on unlimited time right now, but this is for July and August twenty twenty-four. Approving minutes. NCO has advised in the past that our legal requirements are now covered by the YouTube video recording and the shorter form written summary for video record. And I believe this new format is the most complete possible because the video is the raw, unedited footage. So I, as your secretary, would just recommend and, you know, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the minutes for July and August twenty twenty-four represented by the YouTube recordings and the NCO draft of the written summary for video record.
So we have this, so we'll have discussions. Go ahead, Mr. Li.
Thank you very much, Chair. First, I would ask if the maker of the motion would be willing to divide the motion for the two different months for the following reasons. As has been discussed the previous month, the draft written record for the July meeting had several deficiencies which could be easily addressed. And what I had hoped was during the intervening month that the secretary would be able to take the suggestions and incorporate them into a revision of the document, which could then be presented for review by the board. Now, the same following months, but that's, there's a separate set of errors there. Again, beyond things that others might, because it would be nitpicky, such as having a consistency in the heading of the documents across all of our minutes and agenda documents, that's the one thing. minutes and agenda documents, that's the one thing. But when we're missing folks from the meeting attendees, those are things that could be elementally fixed and repaired, simply posted as a replacement document for us to review. And that's what I hope that we can defer again this month for July and August and have that taken care of. Those suggestions have been posted to the board drive. It could have come from anyone in the public as well, and I did take the time to compile some suggested changes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Times up. So is there any other discussion? Because we, this was motion and it was second to vote on approving minutes as is, right? Yeah. Kevin has already made his statement. So we're going to go ahead for the vote.
All right, Armstrong.
Point of clarification, Chair, just in an effort to be fair here on this board, will the author of this, of this amendment, of this, this motion, thank you, entertain the comments of Board Member Li or not?
Not at this time.
Robert?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you. Just the comment that, you know, we are charged with having minutes that are accurate. And when there are gross inaccuracies that have been pointed out, to forego those really puts the board at risk. Thank you.
Gosh.
Thank you.
This makes me so uncomfortable.
The question has been called. So there is an email from the NCO which explains that the video itself is the minutes. Everything else is just really simple summary. And so I had to go through them to ensure that. So the question has been called. The vote will go ahead.
All right. Armstrong?
Aye.
Simmons?
Bob? Aye.
Isokane?
Aye.
Li?
Nay.
McCarty?
Aye.
McDonald?
Nay.
Schubert Quoc?
Not here.
Carvalho?
Aye.
Five votes for aye, two votes for no, zero abstentions. The motion's adopted.
All right. Thank you. So next, we're going to go on Chair's decision rather to include a non-specific board member concerns recurrent item to future agendas per OIP. Guys, per OIP, board concerns. We can do board concerns, but board concerns must be specific. We cannot have board concerns as like they have community concerns, where you can go back. Board concerns must be to a specific item and must be agenda per OIP. Right? So if you want, if there is a board concern that you have, please send it to me before or by the twentieth of the month, and I'll put it on the agenda. But it must be specific per OIP, because we've been, we're back and forth on this with OIP, okay? Now, as far as the decision on parliamentarian, this one back and forth, back and forth. So I ended up actually, besides talking to all of you and talking to our NA assistant, Camelia here, I ended up talking to quite a few different boards. And what I found out from all the boards is there is not one single board on the island of Wau, the civilian council, that has a parliamentarium. Not one single one has a parliamentarium. So the advice that I was given by different chairs and different boards was there was no need for parliamentarian. You should rely on your NA. But if there's somebody that knows the rules and that wants to interject at times, say, can we check this out? Then that's no problem. So I'm going to stick with the NA at this time. Okay? All right, everyone, announcements. The next Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board thirteen regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October third, twenty twenty-four, at six o'clock. Edi Kialani Middle School, and I can't believe I just messed that name up, and virtually via webex. YouTube and archive of video recordings of neighborhood board meetings can be found at youtube.com. Rebroadcast of Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board Number Thirteen meetings are scheduled on O'Leilal Channel forty-nine for every third Thursdays at nine o'clock PM as well as nine o'clock AM on the fourth Saturday of each month. An archive of past meetings may be found at ollelo.org, ollelo.net by searching on Downtown Chinatown. This meeting is
Chair, point of order. Again, as a recognition for the point of order that I made and then held off during your announcement.
What point of order? When did you make a point of order?
While you were transitioning from section nine to, or rather, section eleven to section twelve. And on the chair's report, I tried to get your attention.
I didn't see that. What did you want to say?
Thank you, Chair. You brought the two, two things that are of note. Number one, if a board member makes a request for them to put on the agenda. I'll just note that on five August, I did ask for something to put on the agenda regarding the use of timers so that we could resolve some of our timing issue. I'm not sure why that didn't make it to the agenda this month, but I hope that it could be considered for next month.
Okay, so can you send me? To me, I think you made that request. Dylan was supposed to do it because we did ask Dylan about that personal timers. Because you're going to put timers on.
Discussion of such, but it was a direct email to you, but I'll reiterate that again. And then, secondly, again, we're glad to have our neighbor's assistant here. I'd love to have her hear her opinion on things such as if the minute should reflect known names of people who are attendees and other items that are listed on the posted testimony to the website. And how will we address testimony that might come similarly from members of the public who are concerned that their presence might not be documented on the written record of the video summary? Thank you.
All right. So thank you very much. So you can come back and answer that next month. But the, but the, but the whole thing is, this is after, after this is, we're done already because I've already adjourned. But the whole thing was that our minutes are now the broadcast. It's the YouTube broadcast. That is the minutes. That's why they have the minutes and the timers. This is why I asked for this email to be specific and address this. But if you want to bring this up on the board concerns, send me things to put on the board concerns on the agenda, and I will gladly do it. Thank you. Okay, I had already adjourned it. Bye-bye. If I can have some help in fixing this, I had to do this myself, set it up for myself before everybody got here. I appreciate it.